Just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee's Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee's Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee's Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of March 4th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers in City Hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the Council Day Brief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Attention drivers, beginning today, March 4th, there are four road closures scheduled along sections of Southeast Second Street, Northeast Ash Street, Southwest Sampson Road, and Northwest Chipman Road. We appreciate your patience and understanding as we work together to improve our city's roadways and infrastructure. Road closure information and detourists can be found at cityofls.net. And be sure to sign up for the city's free alert system, LS Aware. Receive emergency and non-emergency information by text, email, or phone. This is a great thing to use especially for road closure information. You choose how you want to be notified. Learn how to sign up on the city's website. And this week is severe weather preparedness week. Everyone is encouraged to participate in a statewide tornado drill Wednesday, March 6th at 11:00 a.m. It is important to have a plan in case of a severe weather incident such as a tornado. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee's Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee's Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store when you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours, the opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at this station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better, and that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. See firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We've worked on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear. Again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city, therefore, we want it to provide the best care and the closest units we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up, and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day, and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city, and they divide it up evenly.
Thank you for going on a tour with us today. If you have any other questions about the Lee's Summit Fire Department, please go to our webpage at lsfire.net or follow us on Facebook at Lee's Summit Fire Department.
Thanks for joining us on the tour.
This month's council member spotlight is all about Mayor Bill Baird. Check it out.
I have always volunteered in the community, and I was always really involved. But then I ran for school board. Whenever I got done with my term, I just felt like I had more to give. It's always been my goal from day one is to get everyone in the community connected and working together. And I always called it a spirit of community. Well, mayor's 24/7, and I have a job. I've had to work really hard at compartmentalizing, is what I call it. So during this time, I'm going to do work. During this time, I'm going to be mayor, even though I can get a call at any moment about mayor stuff. And so I've had to even work that much harder at setting aside time for myself or for family. So I like to exercise. I like to work out. Hillary's my wife. She actually goes to work out with me as well. We do like to go downtown to the shops. We make sure we maximize our time together. I've got two kids as well, and we spend a lot of time with them, or whatever time they will give us these days. And I have a dog. I think most people that know me know I have to have a dog. We have so much development going on, and we're growing fairly quickly, so we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And sometimes we have gaps in infrastructure, and we've always managed to get by. But with this kind of growth, we're really having to be creative and look at our options and just have a good plan for water, sewer, roads, and more. If we want to grow the most healthy way, we need a diverse economy. We do have a lot of retail that's opened up here, and there's been new construction for retail. We really need to focus in the future on bringing some, you know, well-paying jobs here, good, strong employers that want to be located in this incredible community of now 101,000 people. A lot of our workforce does commute to work still, so they leave Lee's Summit to go to work. And it'd be nice if we could keep some of those citizens right here in our community. The times I feel most proud are actually when I'm in the community and I see the community come together.
We have Buddy in the house.
It's the mayor.
The tree lighting is always very fun. I always feel very proud. It's just a great warm feeling. The same thing goes for when the council will do something and we come together and make a good decision together. There's been a few of those that I just, you go home feeling like a winner. And one of them was when we put together the downtown farmer's market, when we bought the land, and it became real, you know? All that hard work. But also, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, that was months and months of discussions and conversations that were really hard to have, and we went ahead and moved forward.
Heavenly Father, we continue to ask your blessing tonight to heal the brokenhearted and comfort those that have been affected in the past weeks with devastating losses. We continue to pray for Independence Police Officer Cody Allen and Civil Process Server Drexel Mack, who were affected by tragedy last week, and continue to ask you to bring peace and comfort to the Lopez and Gavon families. Again, bless all the first responders that were answering the call for aid. Bless our community as we heal and pray for neighborhood spirit and give us strength, peace, and trust, and maybe always be thoughtful of the duty that we have to our citizens and our city. Lord, have mercy and hear our prayer.
Again, welcome, everyone. I'm calling to order the city of Lee's Summit Regular Session Number 66. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember DeMoro.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Baird.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Felker. Council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Leader is starting off slow, so give us a second. All votes are in, please record the vote. The agenda is adopted unanimously, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It also is unanimous, thank you. Next is council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in your district and the community. Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations to Chief Snyder, who was sworn in as the president of the Missouri Association of Fire Chiefs.
Very nice, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, mayor. I think Lee's Summit West, no, not Lee's Summit West, Lee's Summit Tiger basketball team, girls' basketball, won the district championship last night, so they play the next round in Pickapoo Friday. And then, in addition, I know it's a week or two old now, but there was the state wrestling tournament, and I thought it was pretty neat that we had an undefeated state champion for Lee's Summit North, Charlie Dykes, who won at the 126-pound weight class. I kind of take some interest in this, you know this.
Yes, I do.
But even when you say, when a wrestler finishes fourth, as Cooper Nally for Lee's Summit North did at 132 pounds, that's really awesome. And then you've got others. Grady Mortensen at Lee's Summit West, fifth at 150. Jackson Jones placed second at 165 for Lee's Summit High School. Luke Steinbrug placed fourth at 157 for Lee's Summit North. And then Kenley Harker in the girls' Class 2, placed fourth at 100 pounds. Up for these wrestlers.
What weight did you wrestle?
I finished at 160. Started at 125 as a freshman, as a six-foot freshman.
125, six-foot tall. Nice. You had some leverage on.
I did, leverage. You take what you get. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Other council roundtable? I'll just say, instead of saving it for council comments, we'll be going to Washington, DC next week to meet with our representatives and senators. A few of us will be, so no meeting next week, not until the 19th. All right, that takes us to public hearings. So I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A. This is a rezoning from RP2 and CP2 to CP2 and a preliminary development plan for Pro Deo Youth Centers, 107 Southeast 9th Street and 902 Southeast Douglas Street. Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the Before the presentation, real quick, just a disclosure. Usually, once an application goes in, council members and mayor don't meet with applicants. Anything that we do, then we disclose it to make sure everybody knows that it didn't affect our decision-making on this matter. We just, it was more fact-finding. But I met with a few of the members of the Pro Deo organization, saw some of this. No, I didn't see the presentations, mostly just visited, and that's just a disclosure. So Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, mayor. I met with them as well whenever they had an application in process, but any decision I make tonight will be just based on the information I see tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you swapped with Mr. Slish, so you're going to go first?
Well, I wanted to just do a quick acknowledgement, if you will.
Yes, please.
Joshua Johnson, Director of Development Services. As you know, as these various plans come before you, it takes a big team to make these developments happen. Tonight, you're going to see familiar faces, both from staff and the applicant, and some very familiar faces. One person I wanted to acknowledge was Amy Kaineman. She helped with the grant, the federal grant that's one of the forces driving this project to happen. Amy is Assistant Director with Development Services. She's over grants and administration. You normally see her here for the Community Development Block Grant Program, but just wanted to pay, acknowledge special attention onto her efforts with this project.
I don't see her here.
She couldn't make it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
That's another reason I wanted to acknowledge her. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Slish.
Good evening. Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee's Summit, Missouri. With me tonight, we have this section. So a whole group of people that'll help us kind of through the process of the meeting as we talk through this great project in town. So Pro Deo essentially sits to the west of Lee's Summit High School on the outer road. If you've been here long enough, it's the old Big Tex trailer lot that has been set in vacant for quite some time, just east of the railroad tracks. It is currently a split-zone parcel, so the outer parcel is CP2 with the backside being RP2. So one of our pieces today is asked for rezoning to make the entire site CP2. We think it is incompliant with the overall plan of what the outer road is, as everything to the east essentially is CP2, as we're kind of entering into the downtown area as you come off of either Douglas or head back to the west on Blue Parkway. So as you look, on the upper right is kind of a view to the north, as you kind of go down Douglas towards town, so you have a number of houses, residential area, back in kind of the old downtown area where there's no curb and gutters, not much sidewalk, it's kind of the downtown area. To the west, then, kind of along 9th Street, is our site there to the left, again, more residential in nature. And then to the east is the Diamond Muffler, kind of the start of that CP2 development on the outer road. The overall site, we worked to try to develop something that would create most of the sound or the noise uses, so the outdoor patio, the basketball court, the gathering space is all on the easterly side or southerly side to try to keep us away from the residential area, keep us towards kind of the higher noise center of the area. The westerly side of the site will be our entry. Pro Deo is a facility that primarily transports a majority or a good portion of their students that come. If not, it's some type of a mentor or an adult that will bring them. It's all an app-based project, or app-based facility, so everybody who's coming, they're very aware of who and how many are coming each day, so it's not a surprise. And so what they expect and will see typically in a site like this will be 40 to 60 students. They try to maintain a ratio of 10 to 1, so on typical days, you'll have four to six, seven staff members in there. So as we said, the site itself is 7,800 square feet, it has 17 parking spaces. The reason it works for us in this situation is because, again, most of these are younger teens that don't drive yet. And so again, Pro Deo's vans will pick them up, adults will drop them off, but again, the operations are 3 to 5 after school on Monday through Friday, so it's a very limited use. Staff will be there a little bit more preparing and getting stuff set up, and then trying to assist in situations that need be. But again, the site is very specifically used to after-school activities. And then again, as you start to see, kind of on that easterly side on Douglas is kind of an outdoor space, patio gathering space, and then kind of that basketball goal on the south end. Just for an idea of kind of what you're seeing noise-wise, site-wise, use-wise, Douglas has a typical average daily traffic of around 3,000 cars. The outer road has a typical daily traffic around 1,500 cars. Based on the size of this facility and the commercial use, you might see an average daily traffic of 446, as we show, based on the code books. But Pro Deo is expected to be less than probably 50 trips a day. So it's a very low, intense use, which is why we think this site is a very good-suited site for it, because it's a server of the community and the high school that's directly to the east, as well as it's not going to be a huge effect on the neighboring properties. So as we said, there's 17 parking spaces, which we typically see four to six parking cars during the day for our staff, and then the vans that would be there on site. So we think it's more than adequate. We know that at Planted Commission, that comment came up of parking spaces requirement, what might be there, so we have reached out to the church that is directly to the east of us and worked out a verbal agreement with them that in situations, should there become a need for additional parking, we can utilize their facility. And then additionally, we worked with staff to identify that there is some ability to put some head-in parking off of 9th Street to create some onsite parking so that we can increase our parking by 12 to get to a total of 29 if it became necessary down the road. So architect is here, but I'll give my best shot at it, so please feel free to ask any questions. But generally, the idea was is to try to create a commercial building that has some residential feels to it. So the idea was to try to keep the height low, use some flat roofs to kind of keep a contemporary look to it with the metal panels, so there's architectural metal panels, brick on the four exteriors. The unique idea that I did not know, that he snuck in on me after Planted Commission and told me, is if you look at those colored metal panels that are utilized on the facility, he actually went to the effort of identifying an equal number of metal panels for the high schools that are in town. So you'll see Lee's Summit West colors in there, Lee's Summit North colors in there, Lee's Summit High School colors in there, and then the blank white ones should Lee's Summit ever get the fourth high school. So just kind of a unique characteristic of the design that he provided on the site. So you can see all four sides try to contemplate or continue that design of the architectural metals of pieces. On the westerly side that faces the residential, it's the piece, it tries to keep it a more subdued texture and color as it looks towards the residential area. Internally, there's an interior kind of larger assembly space, the offices that are kind of centrally located to keep a visual perspective on the entire facility, and then a number of opportunities inside there for the students to learn needed skills, find things that they're enjoying, things that they might connect with someone else in. So there are things in there like the podcast space, the cooking spaces, just hangout spaces. And so overall, it's just trying to find a place that teens can come, find a friend, find a space to feel comfortable and continue to grow and fellowship. So again, just starting to look at that front facade or facility, this would start to look internal, so you can start to see what some of the spaces may look like. That bottom right picture would be kind of the back area on the easterly side, kind of the outdoor gathering space that would be out there. You're seeing the basketball facility and some of the other, again, areas on that easterly side, southerly side that would be facing Blue Parkway and Douglas. So we did have a neighborhood meeting, had pretty good attendance. We had a number of people there that generally just asked the questions of what's it going to do, how's it going to work? We did actually have the neighbor that is directly adjacent to us to the west show up, asked a number of good questions. Overall, I think we left that meeting with a good feeling that she felt pretty comfortable with it. We are going to be putting up an opaque vinyl fence, six-foot tall, with additional screening between us and her to make sure that she's not impacted by us, and actually left that meeting with her asking if she could figure out a way to get her lot included with ours by us purchasing that one. So always opportunities to expand if it comes along. But as of right now, I think overall, the neighborhood has been well-vetted, and I think everybody feels pretty comfortable with the project in town. So with that, we will stand for any questions you need.
All right, thanks, sir. Let's do staff's presentation first.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 23.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, lists of Exhibits 1 through 23.
So the project site that we're here to discuss does sit in a transition area. So this zoning map here will kind of illustrate where we sit relative to other existing development. Of course, the site is bordered on the south by the highway. So you have a confluence of commercial development here along the east side of Douglas Street, residential uses to the north and to the west, and then further to the east, you have institutional uses in the form of church, the high school, and then further off the screen, you've got the Missouri Highway Patrol Station. From a comp plan perspective, the project site sits in the downtown Activity Center area, whose focus is to be able to provide a number of uses that help facilitate and are complementary to existing residential uses, area commercial uses, small uses, services as well, that can be easily accessible by various modes of transportation. So being located here at the fringe of residential neighborhood and in close proximity, less than 750 feet actually from the high school, it does allow for users of the facility to be able to get to the facility by foot, by bike, you know, personal vehicle, or also the kind of the congregate type of vehicle service or van pickup that's provided from the various high schools in the city. So there will be landscaping on all four sides of the development. To reiterate a point, there will be a fence to provide some, a visual and physical buffer between the proposed development and the existing residence to the west. Since the site is bordered on three sides by a right-of-way, again, there will be extensive use of shrubs and trees that are required by ordinance to line the project site. So that's what you see here to the north, to the east, and to the south. Architecturally, primarily, we're looking at face brick and strategic use of metal panels, architectural metal panels. The use of metal panels will not be seen, well, I guess that's not true. There will be a significant amount of use of metal panel on the east side that's more directed toward the institutional and commercial uses, but on the sides that do face the institutional and commercial uses, but on the sides that do face the residential uses to the west and to the north, and face south toward the highway, you do have more of an even mix of the face brick and different types of architectural metal panels. So from an aesthetic standpoint, again, the mix of, there is a chromatic and textural difference that you do see to kind of complement the type of architectures proposed here and how it interacts and blends with the residential uses, but also does provide more of a commercial-facing aesthetic toward the existing development toward the east. I guess one thing, I'll back up and mention a little bit of the history on this one. So as has been brought up, this, the single project site is made up of two parcels. About a third of the way in, about a third of the project site, the western one, was formerly the site of a single-family residence. It was demolished in about 2006, and there was a commercial building over the bulk of the, I guess, the eastern two-thirds of the site demoed in 2010. So this overall area has been vacant, unused, underutilized for about fourteen years now. So the, from a use perspective, staff is supportive and believes it to be a good and complimentary use to the surrounding commercial development, and to, more particularly to area residents and the residential development that you see here. So there are two conditions of approval that you see here, which are standard, just that the development being in compliance with the site plan and the building elevations that you see before you. So I'll yield to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions for staff or the applicant? That's Mayor Edson.
Thank you. I guess this is more for the applicant. So seventeen parking places. Where are all the kids got to park?
The kids, and Prodeo staff can come in and speak to you more than that, are not typically the driving-age kids.
Okay.
The kids are typically the prior-to-driving age or right-up-to-it. There's extended benefits, I think, of this facility being able to expand opportunities for people that can get to that age. But the people that come right now, or the students that come right now, are not of driving age. And so most of them are either transported by the Prodeo bus, will walk from Lee Summit High School, or have an adult or person that will bring them. Now, if we get to the point that the services expand to drive ability to people that can, that's where we're starting to talk about. We have opportunities with the church to the east that we've already worked out during the week, obviously, they're not doing anything or much with their parking lot. We have agreement with them to utilize some of that. There is some opportunity off of Ninth Street to create some head-in parking off of Ninth that staff is in support of that would give us twenty-nine onsite. And so there are some opportunities, should the services expand, but as current and currently planned is, there's not a need for the driving, because they don't drive.
Or the neighbor's house.
True.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. I did not know that. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Looks like you maxed out the parking, though.
We tried.
The south there.
Yeah. So the idea always was, is that we wanted to create something that was reasonable, so even to the idea of this being an eight thousand square foot building, should Prodeo find themselves in another location, the seventeen parking spaces would allow that facility to switch to something like three thousand square foot of office and five thousand square foot of warehouse or something like that, and that would still park per code. So it doesn't limit them to unusable buildings should they ever decide to leave.
How wide's that driveway?
So the drive-in meets the standard. It's twenty-four feet of pavement, twenty-eight foot back-to-back, and then the drive-through, the front driveway area is sixteen foot of travel space.
For that once-every-five-year event where you might have extra people, could they park in there?
In the way.
Driveway.
I'd say we probably wouldn't. If we get to the spot, I guess, plus the app, being that it's an app-driven facility, we're going to know how many people are coming, and should that day arise that there's going to be more people than parking spaces, then we'll work with the church to relocate cars at that location.
Get the church's backup.
Yep.
Good. Right. I'm not seeing any further questions, so is there anybody here tonight that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward.
Hi. Kent Reader, 4329 Southeast Cantor Drive. Mayor Baird, council members. As I said, my name's Kent Reader, and I'm a board member for Prodeo Youth Center, and also serve as the chairman of the building committee. Also here tonight, we have a majority of our board members in attendance. I'd like to acknowledge our board president, Andy Campbell, Jan Nelson, John Bedoin, Fred Lane, Amy Shield, Sarah Taylor, Christina Davis, Jody Springer, and we also have our executive director, Dr. Elaine Metcalf, with us. So thank you for your time this evening. I know that the purpose of our time tonight is primarily logistical in nature, but if you'll permit me, I'll take a quick pause to lend some context to this building. Prodeo Youth Center started thirteen years ago and is the only teen center serving Lee Summit. Our primary focus is providing prevention services to combat youth mental health issues like depression, anxiety, and self-harm. It's no secret that our country is suffering from a massive mental health crisis, particularly amongst our youth. Given that, you may be surprised to know that Prodeo is the only organization in Lee Summit aimed toward prevention rather than treatment. Our approach is to offer teens a safe place to be with their peers while being supervised by trained staff with a minimum of a ten-to-one, teen-to-adult ratio. We provide tutoring, meals for the food insecure, community service, and fun activities like outings to Starlight Theater and Worlds of Fun. And once the teens form a bond with our staff, they open up, and they come to us when they're in need. Last year alone, Prodeo provided almost one thousand tutoring sessions, over two thousand hours of Fun Friday and Summer Events, and over five thousand hours of direct services to families in Lee Summit. In our thirteen years, Prodeo has served more than one thousand Lee Summit teens. Over the past few years, we've developed a partnership with Rediscover to provide mental health support when teens' problems seem bigger than they can handle. And we've certainly come a long way in our journey as an organization. The first three years, Prodeo existed in the basement of a family in Lee Summit. Then ten years ago, we moved into our current location, a space that a church, New Beginnings, allows us to use for free on a handshake agreement. No lease, no contract, just a promise that we can use that space for a few hours each week. Last year, Lee Summit residents Bob and Jane Rutherford approached us with a gift of six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in memory of their son Wesley. Through getting to know the family a bit more, Jane remarked that Wesley could have absolutely used a place like Prodeo when he was a teen. We were able to take that generous gift and, in partnership with the city, were awarded a matching grant from the Missouri Department of Economic Development for the purpose of constructing our own space, a place that is expressly designed to serve our teens. This new home will be called Wesley's Place, in honor of Wesley Rutherford. This new space will also allow us to expand our services to include middle school programming, which we are not currently able to provide due to space limitations. It'll also give us the opportunity to add alumni programs to provide workforce readiness and training programs to teens after they graduate. All of this is to say that, yes, we're here to ask for your approval for our plans and zoning, but what's going there is so much more than a building. It's an avenue to ensure the future of Prodeo Youth Center, and will allow us to serve even more of one of Lee Summit's most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let me see if I can get this mic closer. There we go. Hi. Oh, you're taking it. Hi, I'm Ashelon Davis, and I am a Prodeo alumni. I attended, starting in 2015, when I was in middle school. I'm here to share some of my experience personally from Prodeo and give you guys some insight into why this is an organization that deserves your support. When I was seven years old, my dad was diagnosed with multiple myeloma, and his diagnosis caused me to have some early onset symptoms of anxiety and depression. And struggling with these mental health problems really isolated me socially from my peers for most of my youth, but it became especially difficult during middle school and high school as I began to face bullying and I didn't have any friends at my school to support me. That's when I started attending Prodeo. Right away, I noticed there was this ease and comfortability to talking to my peers at Prodeo that I had never experienced at any of my schools before. And I think it has a lot to do with the fact that Prodeo is structured to be a safe and supervised social environment for teens, whereas schools' primary focus is always just on education. One of the first friends that I made at Prodeo was a girl in my grade named Sierra, and we found out that we attended the same school and began spending time together there as well. She suffered from a lot of the same issues as myself. She had anxiety and had always had trouble making friends growing up. But just the same as myself, when she started attending Prodeo, she began to thrive, and within two months, she was close friends with nearly every kid who attended regularly. One day at Prodeo, Sierra confided in a few of us that her fifteenth birthday was coming up, and she was afraid that it would be disappointing, because it was supposed to be a big one, but she was from a small, low-income family. It was just her and her mom, and that coupled with the fact that she had never had very many friends, had made for some pretty lonely birthdays in the past. Upon hearing this, the Prodeo staff immediately started preparations for a quinceañera celebration. I still remember the way that she looked walking into the room in this beautiful navy blue gown that swept the floors, and it was stunning, but what really left an impression in my mind was the way that her smile lit up the room that day, and I'd never seen her look more like she belonged. It was a really special day for everyone involved, but that's just how Prodeo always was. There was this constant air of warmth and inclusivity, like there was a special spot carved out just for every kid that walked in the door. Today's teens are tomorrow's leaders. Each one of them is going to make a mark on the world, and some may even take up positions in this very building and make important decisions like this one on behalf of their friends and neighbors. And that's why I can't think of a single more important thing that we could be investing in as a community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Are there any additional questions from the council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? You hearing, no for the testimony. I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? They're pretty quiet. I think that probably means they're supportive.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Say something. It's exciting. Well, I think it's an exciting opportunity for the organization, and I know that there's a lot of work that went into this, and years, not just to this project, but I think, as was demonstrated to us today, or shared, really the commitment to the idea, even more than the building, I think, is such a valuable contribution to our community and to the individuals who it's served over the year, that the organization has served over the years. So excited to support this today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMoro?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate the Prodeo group, Dr. Metcalf, and everybody that came. This is a first step, of course. I mean, there's a lot more that's going to happen after this, but this is a first big step. I want to congratulate you on that. And I know Dr. Metcalf and her staff and everybody that came is just pleased that, you know, this is the first hurdle, but this, I cannot think of a better group to come in front of us and make us feel like we actually, we can do something really, really good. And I had the pleasure of meeting Chris and Ashelon last year, and her story still touches me. I just can't, I just want to say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Patam Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the comment was made that this is a project coming before us, but I want to acknowledge the comments that were made, and just commend, and I apologize, I didn't catch your first name, the last speaker. At. Ashelon.
Ashelon.
Okay, Ashelon. Kudos to you, because I was not on the fence. I know where I'm voting, but your comments are very, very powerful, so I commend you for that, and if that's the leadership we're developing with Prodeo, I think we're all in. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's been a couple of years now, but my family, we got to, the teens came to our backyard, they used our backyard for a bonfire a couple of years ago, and they were the nicest, most respectful teens that I'd ever met, so I'm excited to support a project like this, so thank you.
Thank you. Would this be like one of the, a one-of-a-kind type of facility? Can't wait to show it off later on, after we get this through, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Edson to please read Bill Number 24-040.
Happy to, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill Number 24-040, An Ordnance Approving Rezoning from District RP2 and CP2 to District CP2 and Preliminary Development Plan for Prodeo Youth Center on Approximately .9 Acres of Land Located at 107 Southeast Ninth Street and 902 Southeast Douglas Street, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-040, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Moves to second reading unanimously, so congratulations and thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Next, we're going to have a public hearing. We're going to close the regular session and open the public hearing and an amendment to the City Code, Chapter 19, Article 3, Parks and Recreation Impact Fees. Mr. Snook with Parks and Recreation will be the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the
Good evening. Joe Snook, Administrator, Lee Summit Parks and Recreation. Before I begin, I would like to enter into the record Exhibits 1 through 11, as they appeared in your meeting packet.
Please enter into the record Exhibits 1 through 11.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present the proposed park impact fee this evening. I recognize the presentation, including your packet, is lengthy. However, I thought it was important, due to the significance of the topic tonight, that a comprehensive review of our information and proposal be provided for public record. I'll do my best to move through the presentation in a thoughtful and timely manner, and I welcome your questions at any time during the presentation. Before I begin, I would like to recognize Park Board members who are with us tonight, President Lawrence Bivins and John Ellis, up here to my left. I'd also like to thank the entire board for their time, effort, robust discussion, their support, and the recommendations leading up tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of the CEDC, who I've met with twice over the last couple of months, for their comments, their questions, and their discussions prior to this evening. So why are we here? Well, really, we're here as, in support of the Ignite Strategic Plan and Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Parks Master Plan. Both those documents really identify Parks and Recreation as a critical, a critical need in our community, and we need to identify funding to help support the opportunities in our community to continue to enhance our parks and recreation system and the amenities that are offered and will be offered into the future. Right now, the Parks Department has a quarter-cent sales tax that is used for capital improvements throughout our park system. We know that the current park sales tax will We know that the current park sales tax will expire in March of 2033, and we know that the current resources that we project to be provided by that sales tax will not be adequate to allow us to purchase land and to develop parkland into the future as our community grows. Lee Summit is a vibrant community, and we have a great park system, and the park system is a part of what helps make this a great and vibrant community. We know that the parks are a critical infrastructure. Homes that are in close proximity to a park have a 20% higher value than homes that are not in close proximity to a park. We know that children are five times more likely to be a healthy weight if they live within a half mile of a park, and we know that people who live more than a half mile away from green space are nearly 50% higher odds of experiencing stress than people who live within a quarter mile. We have strong support in our community. They've shown that support through, uh, survey responses, where Parks Department rates very highly. We saw that support at the last sales tax election, where we had 80% voter approval. Our department has been voted, has received the Gold Medal Award in 2010 for the best park agency in our category, and we are currently accredited and being accredited for over 20 years. As an accredited agency, that puts us in the top 2% of parks and rec agencies in the United States. As an accredited and gold medal-winning agency, that puts us in the top 1% of park agencies in the United States. The legacy for tomorrow and beyond, our, our master plan and strategic plan, um, identifies several goals, three that I'll share tonight, is one, that we would want, we want to have a park within a half mile of all residents. That half mile is, is, is an important distance. As I mentioned previously, people are healthier, people have less stress, people have better mental health when they live in close proximity. Our, our goal is to have 20 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents, and our community was very clear, uh, as we worked on this master plan, that they wanted the Parks Department to help protect the natural resources of Lee Summit. Currently, we have about 71% of our community lives within that half mile, um, that we're trying to get 100% of our community to. We have 1,250 acres within our park system, which gives us a current level of service of 12 and a half acres per 1,000 residents, with our goal again being 20 acres per 1,000. The Ignite Comprehensive Plan projected that our population would hit 140,000 by 2040. That's 16 years away. It's, it's a lot closer than it feels. Right now, if we wanted to maintain the 12 and a half acres per 1,000, uh, the Parks Department would need to increase our park acreage by 500 acres. If we wanted to hit that 20 acres per 1,000, we would need to actually acquire a little over 1,500 acres. And we also know that the cost for development and for land is going to continue to increase. A lot of work has been done prior to tonight. It really started in, uh, in the fall of '21, when we started working on our master plan and bringing our community together, gathering data through surveys and, and community input, uh, processes and workshops and so forth. And then, uh, through that, uh, they identified that the community said, hey, we need you to protect more land, and one of the ideas that came out was either look at a land dedication ordinance or a park impact fee. So, we took those ideas to the, to the Park Board, and for probably 12 or 13 months, we vetted that, we had quite a robust discussion, vetted the two different options, and, and hence, we're here this evening with the, uh, with the proposal for a park impact fee. At the CEDC, we were asked about, uh, our, our sales tax and, and, you know, how do we use that money? So, uh, just real quick, so since 2018, uh, currently, we've invested just under $22 million in our community in park, park improvements. You can see where those different, uh, investments have been made, uh, and then I've outlined the next five years, which would be the CIP, uh, that we, that we provide each year through the budget process, but we are looking to invest an additional $52 million in our park system over the next five years, and you can see where those investments will be made. We've received, we've completed several neighborhood park renovations, and, um, we're very proud of that. Our community loves that. We just had a ribbon-cutting Saturday at Lower Banner Park, and, um, you know, I always enjoy those events, but I had a mother come up to me with her young daughter. Uh, we have a trail that's not quite finished, it's a half mile. We're gonna get ready to pave it soon as the asphalt plants open up, and she just thanked me so much because she has a trail, and her little daughter's gonna now have a place that's safe for her to learn how to ride a bicycle. So, it's those kind of moments that, uh, that remind me of the importance of what we do every day. I'll mention just two quick here. Lowenstein and Summit Park renovations we did in 2020, uh, through data collection, uh, in, in, in 2017, we had just over 33,000 people visit Summit Park. Last year, we did the renovation in 2020. Last year, we had over 68,000 people visit Summit Park. Lowenstein in 2017 had around 50,000 visitors. Last year, 113,300 visitors. We had over 200% increase in usages of each of those parks after our renovations. Parks are important. What are some of those future projects? Just kind of give you a snapshot, I kind of listed those five-year capital projects. Uh, we'll be looking to make significant investments in our Bailey Farm Park and Nature Center, which is off of Ransom Road, adjacent to James A. Reed. Uh, we're gonna reintroduce Safety Town back to our community, which is a, which is a facility where it'll be programming, and, and, and kids will be able to come and learn about street safety, and it's, it's a program that we partnered with the police and fire in the past, and I'm sure we'll be doing that again in the future. The outdoor pickleball court complex is one that we're hoping to get started here in the next, um, several months, but that is, uh, pickleball's a very fast-growing sport and one that many in Lee Summit love, and we want to get that facility together. And then probably the last, the other one I mentioned on this slide is, which has seen a lot of interest by developers throughout our community, is our Field House. And, uh, again, we are trying to secure that location so we can build that facility, uh, because we know that there are significant demands for indoor recreational space, uh, whether it's hard courts and/or soft surface facilities. Park West is another investment we'll be making in the next five years. That is between Eagle Creek and Sampson Road, uh, which will be, um, uh, the master plan identifies several areas for, for practice for our youth, which is a significant need that we have, that is not, that we're trying to help address. Uh, there's a dog park planned for that area also. And then on the right is the Resource Recovery Park. Um, I think we've mentioned this before and presented the master plan, but hopefully we can, we can finalize the funding so we can at least get Phase 1 started, uh, in the, in the next five to six years. So, just a couple of projects that we have, uh, on the horizon. For reference, just wanted to kind of give the, the city council an idea of what it costs to, to buy and to, to purchase the land and to develop a 15-acre park. As you can see, it's a little over $2 million for the investment that we've been making to have a neighborhood park. That's assuming land costs at $40,000, which I think is a pretty reasonable, um, estimate there, so, uh, not an inexpensive thing to do. The map on the right shows you, um, areas where we have parks, and it shows you kind of that half-mile service area that we've identified. The big green ovals identify areas where there are service areas that we have opportunity to, um, provide service. Uh, and from our master plan, we identified two park locations in the north area, uh, a neighborhood park, as well as a small regional park. We would anticipate, or we would like to see, uh, both those parks, uh, maybe integrated into the existing county park system, very similar to Popberg Park, which is a little bit north of this area, but it's a great opportunity to provide neighborhood park resources and then expose people to a more regional-type park system, uh, which will be a little more, uh, rugged and, um, less amenities. In the south, a large regional park and four neighborhood parks have been identified, as well as some trails, uh, which would help complement the existing Greenway Master And then out east, um, uh, the, identify the need for a neighborhood park and additional trail, uh, access out on the east side of our community. Again, hopefully, that might be an opportunity where we can, uh, connect with James A. Reed and, and create a unique experience where you could have a neighborhood park experience, but you might be able to go into a regional park setting also and experience the different amenities and experiences they have there. So, from an ordinance standpoint, that's before you denied, I wanted to go over the, um, the key points of the ordinance. Currently, the ordinance, um, has a start date of October 1st of 2024, so later this fall. Collection would be due at the building permit application phase. There are credits and waivers that are included in the ordinance. Uh, those credits and fee waivers would be available or included for public facilities that are for government use. Any schools that are built in our community for repair or the rebuilding of structures that have been damaged involuntarily. Any development exempt from local, state, or federal taxes would also be exempt from this fee. Any redevelopment where there is an accessory use or no change in use. And then developers, uh, would also receive credits or fee waivers, um, if they wanted to donate land, if they wanted to build a park, um, for public purposes, or if they wanted to make improvements to an existing park, which is in the service area. We have five service areas identified in the, in the community, uh, and they're outlined on that map. Uh, the, the need for service areas, uh, the fees would be collected, um, and used within the service area where they are collected. Uh, the fees can only be used for either land acquisition or development of a new park, or they could be used to improve an existing park within that service area. And there is a 10-year, uh, a 10-year time limit, uh, for those fees to be used, so that we are reinvesting that money as quickly as we can back into the areas where those fees were collected. The ordinance does, uh, does provide for an appeal process. Applicants can appeal the applicability of the fee, they can appeal the calculation of the fee, and they can appeal any credit determination. The process would be an appeal to the city manager. If it's not resolved with the city manager, that appeal will go to the Parks and Recreation Board, and if it's not resolved at that level, then the next, uh, uh, course of action would be litigation. Annually, uh, the fee would be reviewed by the Impact Fee Administrator. If there was an adjustment that needed to be made, that would be presented to the Park Board, and then if the Park Board agreed, then those recommendations would be, um, would be, uh, offered to the city council through the budgeting process and the schedule of fees. I, a point I probably did not make very clear at the CEDC, but I do want to make clear tonight, the ordinance does not include the fees in the ordinance. Just like the other fees that you have for development, it's a part of the schedule of fees, and that's how those fees are, um, are adjusted, established and adjusted. Having said that, I know the fees are an important part of an ordinance, uh, the park impact fee ordinance, so what was proposed at CEDC, uh, is a, a fee based on demand. Demand is determined by the number of bedrooms per living unit, and that is $350 per bedroom. And then there was also, there's also a non-residential fee of 30 cents per gross square foot. I did meet with development community. I met with six developers, um, who do local or regional development, and I was also had conversations with two different building associations. A summary of their, of their comments, uh, pretty much, I think everybody was very supportive of a strong parks and recreation system. They, they were complimentary of our parks and recreation system. Many of them said that they actually use our parks and recreation system as a selling point when they sell homes. Uh, there was minimal feedback on the proposed non-residential fee of 30 cents. One association did contact me late last week and expressed some concern with the 30 cents, uh, would like to see 20 cents instead. Many of the developers confirmed that there are similar-type fees in other communities. Uh, on the Kansas side, there are park impact fees. Uh, in Missouri, there's usually a land dedication ordinance, but they also have a fee in lieu of, which many of the developers told me they pay the fee in lieu of as opposed to doing the land dedication. Many of the developers also indicated to me that that fee would be passed on to the home buyer, they would not be absorbing that fee. Um, one developer expressed that fees should not apply to projects that already have executed development agreements and are in process. Uh, there was, there was some suggestion that existing subdivisions and private green space and pools, uh, help address the needs, um, and maybe do address the needs. Uh, I think, uh, subdivisions and the amenities they provide are great for that subdivision, but they don't provide opportunities for practice space for our youth. Many of them don't have dog park opportunities for people who want to bring their, their pets out. They don't have amenities like golf, or disc golf, or pickleball, or tennis, or basketball courts. Some of them do, but most of them don't. They don't provide programming space for the Parks Department. We program in our parks. They don't provide community gathering spaces, which are important to the fabric of our community. Um, oftentimes, they don't protect open green space and natural resources in our community, which we try to do as a park system. And I will tell you, um, we do, the Parks Department does get calls every year. Not a lot, but we do at least a handful, between two, three to five. We get calls from homeowner associations that want to donate to us their homeowner, their homeowner's space that they have, because they either can't afford to maintain it anymore, or they just don't want to deal with it anymore. So, we do get those, uh, pretty regularly. Uh, and then the last one there is, it suggests the development fee in Lee Summit is high for the metro area. Uh, this slide is provided by Development Services. Um, existing fee is just under $9,000 in Lee Summit, but we are in the middle of the pack, um, with the three-bedroom, uh, park impact fee, uh, we're still middle of the pack. Four-bedroom, we'd still be in the middle of the pack. So, what is the impact on new development? An average home in Lee Summit costs $460,000. With a $350, um, bedroom fee, you'd be looking at, for a four-bedroom home, $1,400, which is about 0.3% of the entire cost of that home. It'd be $4,000, $461,000, so. Uh, for a 200 fam, 200-unit multifamily, assuming two bedrooms per family unit, it's a $50 million investment. The additional park impact fee would be $140,000, which is 0.28% of that development cost. And then finally, for the non-residential, 100,000-square-foot facility or property would be about $38.8 million investment. Uh, the fee, uh, for the park impact fee would be $30,000, so 0.08 of 1%. Based upon the $350 fee, um, we estimate that the annual projected revenue from the park impact fee would be probably somewhere between $865,000 and $870,000. So, what does that mean for the park system? Well, collecting that $866,000 over five years would give us about 4, 4.3 or 4.4 million dollars. Cost to build a new park at 2.1 million. That would give us an opportunity to provide two new neighborhood parks every five years for our community. That would be the, the impact of the park impact fee. So, with that, I will conclude my comments. We appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present this, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Demoral?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, uh, Mr. Snook, I, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, the, the parks have done a really, really, really good job, ever since I've lived here, in fact. Uh, I, I frequent the parks, I'm, I'm a park enthusiast, but, um, you know, you, you talked about your revenue streams. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Department received about $3.5 million in sales and use tax. You have funds, uh, in the little over $20 million. So, that's a pretty sweet spot to be in. You, you're, the revenue streams are coming, you have 20, over $20 million in funds. So, I just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, how has the Parks and Recreation managed that long? Uh, and, and of course, we would be the only city in Missouri to have an impact fee, and the only city in the, in the metro area to have an impact fee and a sales tax. Uh, and even the comparators, I have to mention, uh, they are a third, if not 20% of what you're proposing. A Lath is $520 and 7 cents a foot on the commercial, Lenex is $484 and 12 cents. Uh, so, the comparators on the Kansas side, even though they don't have park tax, they only have an impact fee, are much, much lower, much lower. Um, the, uh, and, and you said you talked to developers and, uh, home builders. I, I talked to 10, and out of that 10, one person said they talked to you, so I, I'm not, I'm not sure if you picked the wrong people or what, but I, I actually was in front of 10. Uh, and ironically, the presentation that preceded you at the CEDC was a meeting about attainable housing. I don't know, I don't know if you were, I know you were right after, I don't know if you heard that presentation. And, uh, I've, I've been around for a while, and I've been at the forefront of making homeownership to young families, or anybody for that matter, uh, that cannot afford houses in the 500, 750, or million-dollar range. Uh, this, this fee would prohibit- That, this fee would prohibit attainable ownership, homeownership in Lee Summit. And I'm talking about the people that are 400, they can afford a 400,000, maybe less, but 400 maybe is their, is their price point. And, and per Jackson County Housing statistic, 46% of Lee Summit homeowners spend more than 30% of their income on housing. A, a stat that I've heard two or three times from the R7 School District is that they are experiencing a loss of between 400 and five, 450 to 500 kindergarteners per seniors. That, that means that five, they, are there 500 students less as kindergartners than seniors? Heavy on seniors, low on kindergarten. And in, in other words, and then, then that's not sustainable. The, the, the School District will tell you that's not sustainable. If they had everybody in one building, that's fine, but the, the elementary schools are losing kids. High schools are gaining. And it translates to one thing. Families of young children cannot afford houses in Lee Summit, Missouri. And, and this number, the 400, 450 to 500 does not include Gray Pack or, or Blue Springs. And now here's a stat that the Home Builders Association gave me. There are 780 households in the Kansas City area priced out of the market for each $1,000 increase in the price of a home. Since Lee Summit contributes 5.2% of single-family homes constructed in 2023. That's 45 to 50 potential buyers priced out of the market with this fee. At $1,000, of course, the, the fee is much more than that. And when you add the water tap and sewer tap fees to this fee, you're over $2,000 in increased fees to a homeowner. And that's, that's close to 90 to 105 homeowners priced out of the market. And, and my point is attainable, we have worked so hard. We're, we're, we're worked so hard to attainable. And to add another fee, it, I, it's just not a good look.
Like I said- We're in a public hearing, Mr. Councilmember Demora, so like, we need to let Mr. Snook respond, and then we can-
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, then we can, then we can make our comments after we close it.
I've got more, though. I've got more.
Well, I want you to put any facts out there you want. I just want to make sure that on the comment side, we do it after the public hearing.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Snook. There's a lot of there to unwrap. But do you want to talk about comparator cities? That was a, a point he made.
Well, I don't have that queued up. Couple, couple things I queued up as he was speaking. So first, who did I meet with? Summit Homes, Drake Development, Griffin Riley, Box Development, Hud Midwest, Discovery Park, the Greater Kansas City Home Builders Association, and the Commercial Builders Association. Those were the, if I could have the overhead, please? Thank you. To mention the fund balance, $20 million. I just want to make sure it's clear on how that fund balance is utilized. We have nine different funds in the park system. One of those funds we manage is a cemetery fund that we managed out on behalf of the city council and the city. And there is a $1.2 million fund balance of that 20 million that was, that was mentioned. And that is specifically for the cemetery. All the other fund balances, where you see Gambra Community Center, Level, Longview, Harris Park, Parks and Rec, those are all separate funds. And the, the funds that we have in excess in those fund balances stay with those funds to address future maintenance, repair, and expansion needs in those particular operations. They're all ran like small businesses. What we, we have our sales tax fund, which you see the construction, the Park COP fund. Currently, we have $16.4 million in that fund. As I mentioned at the CEDC, we plan to build a fieldhouse. The fieldhouse is going to be $24 million investment. That investment, we hope, will be coming in the next couple of years. We have been securing those funds so we can minimize the amount that we're going to have to, we're going to have to finance in the future. Our hope is we're going to have the funding through the sales tax to be able to pay for that facility without taking out any financing. So yes, we do have about 16 and 0.4 million, but that goes to all of our capital improvement. The rest of the funds are specifically designated to support the operations and the future financial needs of those particular funds. And then the cemetery fund stays with the cemetery. Comparators, I know I, I know that you're right. There's in the, in the Kansas, on the Missouri side, there is no park impact fee. We would be the first community in the state of Missouri to have a park impact fee. Most of the communities that have an exaction mechanism use a land dedication ordinance, which Kansas City uses. All of them have an option to pay a fee in lieu of donating land. The majority of developers pay the fee. Kansas City does have a sales tax in place, as well as a land dedication ordinance, which has a fee in lieu of, which the developers I talked to told me they pay the fee in lieu of. On the Kansas side, they all, they do have park impact fees, or that's where we see most of park impact fees in our region. And several of those communities also have sales taxes as an addition to the, the park impact fee, based upon our research.
All right. Okay, I'm going to keep going with questions.
Sure.
And I will come back to you, Councilmember Demora, or I can let you, if you want to make further comment.
Yeah, I've, I've got more. I've, I've got a couple of questions. No more stats, no more stats. I mean, they're pretty eye-opening. I mean, that, that each $1,000 increase, it cuts out 45 people, and with the park, or, excuse me, with the, the sewer tap fees and water tap fees going up, we're talking about 105 families or single people, doesn't matter, cannot move to Lee Summit because this is going to, I mean, that's, that's a big deal to me. The other thing, MOUs, are you pursuing MOUs with SLR and, and PRI properties?
I mean, I will have Ryan Elam speak to that because I've kind of been out of the loop on that.
Good evening, Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. And yes, we are currently discussing a memorandum of understanding with PRI and the SLR group. And we are slated to have that before this, this body on March 26th at the city council meeting. That being said, that MOU doesn't get into any specifics. It just discusses that we're going to work together specifically for civic and institutional uses, as well as kind of a number of other things as we move forward.
And then as far as the, the Unity Village Park that you had on your port, on your slide, are you going to take advantage of the intrinsic development offering parkland? Or are you talking about another park, so there'd be two at Unity? Intrinsic development offered you land for a park?
So-
Are you talking about Discovery Park?
Discovery Park, yes. Discovery, intrinsic is the-
Okay, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question? I don't think I caught it.
Are, are you taking advantage of the, the, the group that's building Discovery Park? Are you taking advantage of the parkland that they've offered, or the, the land that they've offered for a park? It's not parkland yet.
I'm not aware of any parkland that they've offered the Parks Department.
It was in their presentation a while back.
Well, I've met with them twice, and they've never mentioned it.
Okay. Maybe, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that then, because it was in their presentation. Maybe something has changed. And, and as far as, and I, and I really, I appreciate that you don't want debt for a fieldhouse, but I believe that when Longview was built, correct me if I'm wrong. I think my memory serves me. The Parks Department borrowed $4 million from the city. You paid it back. But is that an option to borrow money from the city for a fieldhouse with, with your other fund balances? And, and build a fieldhouse?
Well, I don't, I think that's an option. I think it would be a request that we would have to make. You're correct, we did, we did borrow $4 million from the, from the city, and we paid that back with interest. Originally, quite honestly, we were hoping that we would already be well into the development of that fieldhouse. The original idea was that we would have to finance that one in some capacity. One would have been an ask back to the city council for funding. Because of our, because of the length of time it's been, it's taken to find a location to secure that facility, we have, we have not expended those funds for the fieldhouse that we would have at this point.
Well, that's all I have. I just, you know, I'm a big fan of the parks. I've, I've enjoyed the parks throughout, throughout the time I've lived here. I use the parks. And, you know, it just, my focus changes from, as I call myself a park enthusiast, to, to helping people move into Lee Summit. We've, we, that's the missing middle of housing. And like I said, the fees are just, they're going, and with the water tap fee and sewer tap fee, it's going to, you know, eliminate at least 105 families from moving. That's, that's what we know. That's based on stats. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. When, the first time this came before CEDC, it was 20 cents on commercial and $1,200 per residency. That was apartment house, no matter the size of the house, it didn't matter, it was 1,200. And CEDC gave Mr. Snook direction to reconsider those fees and shift some of that cost to the commercial side, which I appreciate they did make that change. And, and look at doing it, you said, demand-based, which was much more eloquent than what I would say. So apartment, one-bedroom apartment, 350, and, and do it per bedroom. So I think Mr. Snook did what, he did what CEDC asked him to do, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the park board looking at it again. So I just wanted to put that information out there for council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Was, was there discussion about reducing the, the 1,200 fee, though?
Yes, yes. And Mr. Snook went back to his park board, and he brought forward the on-demand because that's, that's what they decided on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought there was someone before me. No, I just wanted to say that, yes, during CEDC, you guys just touched on it. But it was, we did ask for a, more of a tiered plan. But it was at $1,200, and then it came back to an increase on the commercial side, but also now $1,400 versus the 1,200. So while the one and two bedrooms, and I believe three bedrooms went down, four bedrooms and up did go up, and then up from there. So it did go up by 200. So that was a little disappointing, but, so I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to, I want to better understand something. This actually may not be a question for you, Mr. Snook, but Councilmember Demora mentioned water tap and sewer tap fees. And I'm trying to understand if that means there's a recommendation that we're anticipating that those fees are going to be going up? If that's what you-
It was at the financing budget last night. It's coming to us.
Okay. So staff confirming that, that that is, what, what, what's the increase? I have not reviewed financing budget.
We'll see if we can answer that question. I'm not sure of the details because we're in the budget preparation. And as part of that, as Mr. Snook mentioned, we look at our schedule of fees annually. So we're in that process right now. We'll see if we can-
Thank you.
Give us a moment, we'll look that information up.
Great. Mr. Snook, thank you for your presentation and for working on this, you know, at length as you've illustrated with the different, several years-long process and efforts of the Parks and Recreation Board to really hammer through different options and try to determine what might be the best fit for addressing a need or to, talked about today. When, when you go back to the land dedication ordinance, do you have, I may have not asked this of you in the past, but do you have a number, you mentioned Kansas City has it. Other municipalities nearby here that use a land dedication ordinance? Are you aware of how many, or?
I don't know of how many total, I believe. And I'm going to look to my staff who helped in research. Raymore has it. Liberty has it. Kansas City has it. Was there anybody else I'm missing? Those are the ones that we're aware of.
Those municipalities, do they have a comparable sales tax in terms of other funding structures?
I know Kansas City has a sales tax. I'm not sure if Liberty or Raymore has a sales tax.
And your experience, again, the research you did was that those you talked to, the developer faced with the land dedication ordinance nearly routinely would actually, instead of conveying land, would actually pay a fee.
Correct.
Essentially pay, instead of having to dedicate land. You've talked a little bit about this, and I, I just want to kind of go back to it. When we talk about property, in a previous presentation, you used an illustration where you said, property tax goes to pay for operations. Just for our clarity here, property tax goes to pay operations. Sales tax is what pays for those capital projects. And that's primarily what we're talking today is capital projects, new acquisitions that would expand the, the footprint for Parks and Rec, the current space.
Yes, so, so-
But when we talk about this, and, and just some thinking, helping us to understand, that 20 million that was discussed earlier is, what, what side of the equation is that falling on?
Well, so what's your reference? So I showed the CEDC kind of just a very, very high level of, of our funding. So we have three basic funding sources. The sales tax, which is our capital dollars, and that pays for the new parks and park renovations and buildings. We have the property tax, which goes to our park operations. And so that's what pays for our operational side of the park maintenance, the maintenance in our parks, maintenance of our trails, and pays for our admin division. And our third component is the recreation division. Our recreation division generates 100% of the revenues through fees and charges and sponsorships and other mechanisms, non-tax dollars to support all of their operations. So when I showed that, that overhead, that two-plus-million in fund balance, that's been generated primarily through fees and charges. So 60% of our annual operating budget is, is generated through fees and charges. And nationally, an average park and recreation system would generate about 25 to 26% of their fees through fees and charges. So I think we, we, we try to have a balanced approach in how we help to provide for a great park system. And, and we do it very aggressively with fees and charges on the recreation side. So we can maximize the use of those sales tax dollars to build the capital.
Talk about 60-plus percent. That means people are using them, if they're paying for it. So they're coming in and not only saying, I want to spend time in this park, but I'm going to pay to use a certain amenity that's located there. Okay. On the sales tax side, capital project side, and I'm not sure, maybe there's, maybe there's a slide or not in front of us, but my question I wrote down was what, what projects are planned or slated to be paid for by the existing expires in 2033 sales tax? If you could give-
Well, I can go back. So I hesitate to go beyond the CIP of five years, right? I mean, the CIP is something that the park board will approve during the budget process. But here are the, the projected investments on the right-hand side are what we are, we are projecting over the next five years that the sales tax will pay for. So park development would be about 11.2 million. Practice space of providing additional practice space in our community would be 1.5. Well, I mentioned Park West, there's going to be a lot of practice space. That's where that 1.5 is going to be invested. That's almost a $4 million project. So park development money, as well as practice space money, will go to help pay for that. But I'm trying to identify those, these were the commitments we made in the sales tax in 2018. I'm trying to put those into the buckets where we make commitments. So, you know, like Bailey Farm Park and the Nature Center, those are two projects that will be combined together for a $7.5 million project. Phase one of the landfill is a $6 million project. So park development money, the outdoor adventure park money, there's, will, could be used to make those amenities happen, and that comes from the sales tax.
When you say, for instance, the landfill, are you, that 6 million, you don't have that listed except, is that in the 11.2 at the top?
It's part of the 11.2. It's part, the 1.08 for the, for the outdoor adventure park. There's trail development that's a part of that project, so some of the trail development money that's in there. There's trail development, that's a part of that project, so some of the trail development money that's in there would, is identified in the trail area.
Okay, so again, these are funds, these are projects, as you put down here, projected investments through FY29, based on proposed capital improvement plans, things that we're gonna revisit a little bit anyway, like, these will be revisited in the future, 'cause they're five-year plans, right? The, the CIP-
Well, the CIP gets reviewed every year as part of the budget process, correct?
Right, right. Um, so some of this could change, it could be adjustments, but this is kind of, if you had to do your best to give a snapshot now, these are-
Our roadmap.
Yep, okay. Um, so, the, the other question I wrote down is, what projects are not funded? So if you were to identify projects that you say, hey, the current, uh, sales tax, as it would be, you know, extend through 2033, where are we gonna run into, we don't have the money to do it?
Okay, so phase two and three of the landfill would not be funded at this point. Um, uh, Fifth Community Center is not funded at this point. The addition of 500 acres of land and development of that land with the growth of our population is not funded at this point with sales tax dollars. Those are things that come to mind immediately.
That 500 acres, you showed, you had another slide that talks about the 12 and a half acres per- Can you go back to that slide? Do you mind? Okay, just, okay. So our current level of ser-, well, go back to the one right before, I guess, four, right? Here we go. Okay. So our current level of service?
12 and a half acres per 1,000.
Okay.
Our goal is 20 acres of land per 1,000, per our Legacy for Tomorrow Beyond Plan.
So we're, even to maintain, so you go back down the slide, to get to the 500, which would be a maintenance level, not actually achieving the objective, um-
Not growing our level of service, correct?
And we don't have the fun, we don't have a identified source of funds to, at this point, to purchase that 500 acres, aside from what we're talk, part of what we're talking about today.
Correct. The sales tax that we have existing and we project out, and the commitments that we made, add this on top of it, we don't have enough funding to do all that.
Even if this was approved as it stands now, still is a gap between, between what this would provide and what it would actually cost to do those things.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Snook. That's actually, I think I'm done for now.
Okay, good, 'cause I just got kicked away from that.
Uh, yeah. All right. Uh, so, uh, coming back to the question about the tap fees and the proposed increases associated with tap fees. Uh, so tap fees can be a little confusing to read, because they're based off of meter size. Uh, but really what we're talking about is for the sewer system development charges, it's the 5 eighths by 3/4 inch meter. That's what's gonna be on every, on your standard single-family home. This 2,159, that's the current fee today, 2,285 is the proposed fee, uh, in the schedule of fees and charges. So that's a difference, uh, that's an increase of $126 for the sewer tap fee. And then if you go down, uh, again, uh, to the water, it's gonna be the same, 5 eighths by 3/4 inch, uh, charge. The tap fee today is 3,760, uh, proposed at 3,973, that's an increase of $213. Uh, and then there is a meter setup fee as well, uh, and that is currently $680.46, and with a proposed increase to 7,4803, that is $67.57 increase. So you total all three of those together, and the proposed increase is $406.57 for water, sewer, and the meter tap.
Okay. So Councilmember Demora used a $2,000 number, and if I think I'm hearing this right, then, the $407 increase that you just provided overall, typical, plus the 1,400 roughly, four-door, four doors, staged fee, what was it that, Council, I don't remember, four bedrooms, right? 350 per door?
Demand, what bedroom?
Demand, demand-based, that's what it was, sorry. I'm looking for that term. Okay. All right, so 1,800 for a four-bedroom is what I'm looking at. In terms of taking whatever fee structure is in place now versus what might be, this is all, nothing's been approved yet. We haven't approved this new schedule of fees, but it would be part of the request for the city to look at, council to look at, um, in the next couple of weeks or months. I'm just trying to make sure I know the num, I'm seeing the numbers correctly. All I got, I don't know, I think Councilmember Demora might, I don't know if you could respond, or?
Go ahead. Councilmember Demora.
All right. In, in, in the schedule of fees from last night, the, the, now I'm reading right off the agenda. Sewer tap fee goes from 1,384 to 2,159. And then, so that's a total of 775, and then the water is 130, is what, you said 126. I don't know if I rounded up or didn't add the decimal, but, so I come up with 905. From 2,159 to 1,384, that's on a 5 eighths by 3/4.
So, I, I'm not entirely sure exactly which exhibit you're looking at.
Just the agenda from last night, from yesterday, the financing budget agenda, what was proposed.
All I have to look at, I was looking at the supporting document, uh, that was in the packet, uh, that showed the summary of the changes. Yeah, that's, that, this is what I have, this is what's in the packet. So I, if there's an, if there's an error in the agenda title, um, I, I haven't pulled that up. Uh, this is the, this is the changes that were proposed per the schedule of fees. Is there any different? What?
Goffler Director of Water Utilities, so residential sewer connection fees are, um, effective July 1st of 2023, were $2,159, and are proposed to go to 2,285.
That's, that's what I said right there.
Yeah. Being that from the schedule fees and charges, which will be, uh, in the proposed packet coming forward.
That would be right here.
Felker.
Mayor, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so like with a, a land dedication ordinance, um, how does that work in certain cities? Like, is, like, is it their dollar amount? Is it like, is it subjective? Is it pretty consistent? Is it kinda like, you gotta just go work with the other party and figure out?
Well, depends on how the ordinance is written. Every, I mean, we've looked at a lot of ordinances, um, both park impact fee and land dedication, but typically there'll be a, a certain amount of land that has to be donated or given to the city based upon the development. I think it's probably determined by the number of units that are gonna be built within a proximity, and there'll be a number of acres. Then they take that and assess a fee in, in lieu of that, and those are all determined, uh, in different ways, and I don't know how they do that. I just know there are, everybody that has land dedication ordinance has a fee in lieu of, is an option, so if they don't wanna give the land, they can pay a fee.
Gotcha. Well, I just, um, and I remember us, um, maybe it was our first joint meeting was, was talking about how we could do a better job as a city, to like figuring out, you know, when a development's coming in, how do we set aside certain pieces of land for parks, right? And sometimes it works, and sometimes it doesn't. It's like, yeah, they come in and they might, here, we'll give you this land for parks. It's like, whoa, we can't really do much with it. With something like this, it seems to me, so like, and then also thinking of commercial developments, like Streets of West Prior comes to mind, right? It was a great public-private partnership. Um, and I know that there was a lot of time in negotiation, going back and forth about what they would provide or what they wouldn't. Had this been in place, it would have been, here's the dollar amount, right? In a certain, since like, it would have been predictable for the developer to come in and say, like, based on the square footage of what we're delivering here, here's a dollar amount, or we can, it, work to do these improvements if it's less or whatever, like, that might be an option too. In, in lieu of the fee, would we still have those options in some cases?
Correct. So one of the, one of the credits would be, um, improvements to an existing park. So if they came in and, um, they could either pay the established fee, or if they said, hey, um, are there improvements to the park? We could evaluate that. Um, in this case, there were, they made significant improvements to the park, as well as gave a cash donation.
But it, but again, it's, it's predictable, it's written in our ordinances. And so like, even like, 'cause I remember Councilmember Demora mentioning Discovery Park, I do remember ad nauseam, you know, or not ad nauseam maybe, but discussing like, hey, there should, maybe we could donate some parkland or whatever. If we had an ordinance in place, be very clear as to what, you know, what kind of fee would go with that, and then say, hey, maybe we could use some of your land in here to do this, and do a park, if you want us to provide a park or whatever, right? So I think of it in terms of, um, and then also like, a, a housing development would have the option, like, a lot of times a housing development wants to come in and build their own, you know, playground, whatever that might be. And I get why you may want to do that privately versus publicly, but then another opportunity there where you could say, hey, we'd like to put in a playground, and here's the, the land for you to go do that. That might be in lieu of a fee per house, correct, if, if someone wanted to do that, like-
They wanted to build the park?
No, if they said, hey, a, a private developer come in can build a park.
Mm-hmm.
What if they said, hey, we'd rather just give you the land and let you build the park?
That would be a credit, yes.
Right, right. So, uh, and again, I'm, I, I can see pluses and minuses to that. I know that a lot of HOAs, including ours, deferred maintenance and things like that become challenging. So I think, you know, um, if what I'm hearing from you is correct, and maybe, maybe the Park Board's idea behind this, is that there's a cost, um, whether we see it or not, directly or indirectly, someone's paying for something typically in these, and whether it's negotiations where you're going back and forth and trying to put that out, specifically commercial development, um, maybe there's talks with residential, and, um, and knowing that we want, you know, we want opportunities to continue improving the projects, this, this helps us get more predictability of those fees, and sets a very clear expectation for home or commercial, here's what we believe is a reasonable amount to do this. We can always look at other options, but, you know, from a financing and budget perspective, or hey, you're coming into town, here's a clear fee structure that we believe helps us support the growth in additional parks that we may need. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That's accurate.
Okay. Um, and then the only other thing was the overhead that, you don't have to put it back up, but it was, it was interesting how, um, you looked at the, the park, maybe revenues and, and budget, but I think, I think it's interesting, as you look through those dollar amounts, every line item is its own self-sustained business unit. It's like a, it's a little private business, right? And there are funds in there to support the operations, and there are funds that are, are also used for continuing improvement of those facilities, deferred maintenance, things that go into that, but those funds that sit there, like, it's not always appropriate, just like you wouldn't do in a private business, is like drain those down to zero every year, right? You wanna, you wanna have some buffer there and, and to continue to be able to do those things. So, so that, if I was understanding that correctly, you've got a big chunk that's set aside from the sales tax for the arena, or the fieldhouse, or one of those big projects. There was another, I can't remember what the other one was, but then most of the other funds that were sitting there were all tied to specific structures.
Correct.
Level Community Center, Longview Rec Center, um, some of those other items, and then the cemetery. So, um, so that was interesting to know, because I do think, um, I appreciate you sharing that, 'cause I do think it's easy to see, oh, we got all this money, that's, it's kind of accounted for and appropriated to those functions.
And I think, and I think that's important, because many of our facilities, and Level Community Center being one, I mean, it's almost 20 years old, right? Boilers go out, HVAC goes out. There's a lot of thing, you know, we have to resurface pools. Those things are not cheap. I mean, we're, you know, we dropped $80,000 on boilers, I think, last year or two years ago. We don't go to the capital dollars and pay for that, we don't go to the property. We use the funds that have been generated through fees and charges over time that are in that fund balance to pay for that. So, I, and just, I did confirm, um, Liberty and Ray, Raymore both have quarter cent sales tax in addition to their land dedication ordinances.
Thanks. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I just had a question about something that you said earlier, um, I think, I can't remember who it was that asked it, but you said that we don't have enough funding for certain projects, and you listed those projects. Is that where it stands now, because we've got nine years left on the sales tax? So is that including what we're estimating, or are you saying that where we sit now, not counting the nine years we have left?
Um, it's, um, let me, I think I have a slide that may help out with this.
Okay.
Okay. So, did a little projection through the end of the sales tax. So, we, we took, um, we have our projected fund balance, um, at the end of FY24, and the sales tax that we projected out through the end of the sales tax, right? So we look at about $90 million in sales tax between now and the end of '32. The sales tax commitments is that 52 million I showed you through the five-year CIP. The additional projects, I think, um, Councilmember Felker asked, are listed, um, below that. These are unfunded sales tax commitments, which includes, um, the land acquisition and park development, but this would be through '32, which would be a population of 119,000, which, to maintain our same-level services, 225 additional acres in our park system. The subtotal of the sales tax commitments through FY29, as well as the unfunded sales tax commitments, and the addition of land with the population growth, in today's dollars is about $12.4 million. The park impact fee, as it sits at 350 a bedroom, collected over that same time would generate close to 7 million. We still have an, uh, un, uh, we still have a deficit of almost $6 million to try to figure out how we're gonna make up to take care of those projects. And so what happens, either projects don't, aren't gonna get done, we're not gonna buy as much land to keep our level of service where, in, in 14 or 15 years where it is today, or we don't develop the land to the level that we're developing today, so maybe the parks aren't quite what they are today. We offset that probably through other means, um, grants, and different mechanisms like that, which would help bring that $6 million deficit down to a lower deficit. But, um, but that's the best projection I can give, um, for the, at this point. Does that help?
It does. Um, so I wanna make sure that I'm looking at this right, too. So we can eventually fund all these, it's just not gonna be on the timelines that we want?
We cannot?
With, I say, we even continue sales tax after 2033.
Correct. Now, yes, with that caveat that you had there, if the community, if, if we go out and ask for an extension on sales tax, and the community approves the sales tax, then additional funding would be available. But I would, I would, I would imagine there's gonna be additional projects that the community will identify through our community input processes for future projects. I don't know what those would be 10 or 15 years from now, but I think our community would probably weigh in and have a list like they did with the sales tax that we have right now. They said, these are the things that we want. We want these community centers, we want a nature center, we want Sylvia Bailey Farm Park to actually become a farm park, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. So keeping that thought process, the comment you just made, um, and going back to a question, I think, Councilmember Lovell, or a comment he made. So in that scenario, in that, in that, uh, budget you just showed, you can put it back up on the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Moving too fast, I should've.
So based on this projection, um, this is not taken into account other possibilities, like Councilmember Lovell said, whether you do some kind of a, of a land, uh, donation by a developer?
That's correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So that could change this, these numbers.
It could. If, if it was donated, then we would not have that acquisition cost, we'd only have the development cost to worry about. This scenario is assuming acquisition and development of all the parkland that we need, so that is a scenario that could be helpful.
Right. So that could be a potential solution or major assistance to this budget, these projections? Okay. Um, in, in, in these projects, and forgive me, because I'm not as up on, uh, I haven't been, have not been on CEDC for a few years. The landfill phase two and three, uh, when is that estimated timeline?
There is no timeline.
There is no timeline.
Correct. Correct.
And then the land acquisition listed on that, on that pro forma, $9 million? Is that just, again, future, the next nine years?
So, this is based upon, yes, so based upon projections that we have, they project community to be about 120,000 people. To maintain that 12 and a half acres per 1,000, we would need to acquire another 225 acres at $40,000 an acre. That's how you get the $9 million.
Gotcha, okay. That, that answers my question. So, thank you, Mr. Snook. The mayor stepped out. Oh, Councilmember Pryor, I think, had some comments.
Thank you. Well, I do, but I actually, I mean, I, I wanted to speak after the, after the public hearing, so.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you. And following up your questions, Mayor Protim. So, these are fees. So, these are reviewed by council every year.
Correct. They're a part of the scheduled fees.
So, if land is donated and your budget gets reduced by that donation, there's a possibility that council could look at these fees and go, you might go, "Well, I'm not going to need as much because we got a whole bunch of land donated." Correct?
Yes, that could be a possibility.
All right, thank you. I just want council to know that they'll be reviewing these fees every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritson. Do you want to make a comment?
I, I guess I can. Could you do, um, could you do any, like, could you guys make a lower fee work?
Yeah, I think we can make a lower fee work, yes.
Okay. And that, yeah, now I have nothing else until the public hearing is closed.
Councilmember Lovell, we got more questions for you.
And I don't know if this is for you, but it was kind of along the lines of what Councilmember Pryor was just asking, like, so in this ordinance, are we voting on a park impact fee? And then we still have to do the fee structure? Are we looking at this with this designed fee structure? Or does that like?
So, I'm going to take a stab at this. And if I'm wrong, I'm sure Mr. Buschak will correct me. But tonight, what is before you is the ordinance. The fees are not included in the ordinance. So, you would technically be approving the ordinance without the fees. The fees would be approved through the budget process as a part of the scheduled fees. Did I, thank you. I got a thumbs up. I explained it.
So, essentially, we're saying, hey, we are interested in a park impact fee. And at a later date, we will decide if, what those fees look like. And then we would do that annually?
Yes, that's correct. Just like the rest of the scheduled fees.
Thank you. Mayor Tim Lopez?
Sorry, Mayor. Councilmember Lovell, you're just kind of good segue all the time. So, just can you clarify that again? Because I, again, I've not followed the most recent CDC meetings. So, the fee, we're not, we're not approving the fees tonight.
Correct. So, so the ordinance does not include the fees, all right? The ordinance outlines all those items I talked about. But I just pulled this slide back up to hopefully help for clarity purposes. The fees are, are determined through the schedule of fees, just like the other fee, development fee structures that the city has. So, tonight, if you approve the ordinance, you're not approving the fees. The fees will be approved through the budget process as a part of the scheduled fees.
Right, like we did last night with the other water tap fees. Okay, okay. That clarifies it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Okay, so you just clarified this, but I just want to make sure. So, tonight, if we say yes to this, that just means you guys are going to be coming before finance and budget with, so with the fees? And then they would approve that? Is that, and then that would come before council? The actual fees would come before council at a later date?
Yes.
So, it, it, based on like feedback you get after the closed session, after the public hearing is closed, then you guys could potentially rework the fees, correct?
Yes. I think at some point, I will need direction. And park board would probably need some direction on, you know, I think a fee that the city council would feel comfortable with, or we would be proposing of, I don't want to come back to the scheduled fees during the budget process, have a fee proposed and then we go, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about a fee. I think if we could figure that out as we go through the budget process, I think that makes it easier for everybody.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I got some questions.
Okay.
The, I think, we've talked a lot about other fees. And we've talked about CIP. And then we've talked about, you know, water tap and all this good stuff. So, let's try to compare apples to apples here. And so, I'm going to use staff, our city staff, Mr. Snook, for a second. So, Mr. Park, do you mind, I'm going to forward. And just, let's just talk like, in, in the city council, when we deal with things through staff and through public works and such, we're, we have a CIP. We have CIP. We have, I mean, a whole process for which road gets done, which sewer gets done. And it's quite elaborate and it's, it's extremely detailed. But then you also have a schedule of fees for like excise tax. And would you, would you explain the excise tax so we can say? Because this is similar because it has to do with new construction or new traffic that's on your transit, on your roads and on your streets and more. So, would you please?
Absolutely. Michael Park, Director of Public Works. And so, correct. And through the whole CIP process, the parks has a section of the CIP and they're very engaged. They go through the similar prioritization and programming and, and cash flow of their funds to make park improvements. The excise tax, which is a transportation impact fee on new development, it's actually almost modeled, or this is modeled off of that excise tax. When I saw the degree of credits, same thing applies to the excise tax. If you're a tax exempt entity, governmental body, a school district, you get credits. You get that tax essentially waived. If you're redeveloping, you get a credit for whatever that previous development was. It only applies to new development, right? Development, so if you're an existing business and you're not doing anything, you're just one business in, next business out, and it's the same type of operation, there's, there's no, no fee. It is even structured so similar that for a house, it's about $1,000 for a new house construction, single-family house for an excise tax.
Excise, yeah. So, so specifically, sorry, I don't mean to lead you, but I want to, I got other points I want to make and I want to hit this one first.
Leave me, go ahead.
The, so a new business comes in and let's say it's a fast food. It's going to bring a lot of traffic, a certain amount of cars. How do you determine how much they're going to pay?
So, similar to how the park impact fee has been proposed, although different because it went to a public vote, it's not limited to certain service areas where the impact is collected to provide a benefit to that area. It, it's really a citywide, which was its intention to have a, a project supported outside the direct impact.
Getting in the weeds again. How do you, how do you, how do you?
So, what we do is, it, it is an ordinance that's structured in a way that we have a means of calculating the tax, the fee itself that the tax is based on.
You have a schedule of fees.
In the schedule of fees.
Yes.
And it's reviewed every year. It's reviewed by an excise tax committee that proposes its recommendation to the full council and the schedule fees.
So, restaurant pays a certain amount, dollar amount. What about if it's industrial building? And it's going to bring in a bunch of big moving, big large trucks, semis?
That it does. It pays based on the number of trips it generates for the land use.
And you have formulas?
And it has formulas.
You have tables?
Yes.
And then someone calls in and they say, "Hey, we're going to put this industrial park here. And we're going to have all these trucks." And you say, "What's, what's the type of business?" And you sit down with them and you give them an estimate of what their excise tax be.
We refer to a publication of trip generation for various uses.
Because it's bringing tax dollars, it's going to bring wear and tear to the roads that we, we couldn't have anticipated.
Exactly right, yeah.
Okay. And then if, if we've got a road that needs to be redone and we don't, it's in an area where there's not new construction, that's when we have to go to the capital improvements. And we take those funds and we schedule it, you know, five, 10 years out when we're going to replace certain or upgrade and maintenance certain roads, correct?
Correct. And the excise tax is a funding source to help get that accomplished.
Okay. So, let's go to, go to slide 15. So, I saw a lot of heads saying, "Yeah, we're working on," nodding, saying, "We're working on a memorandum of understanding," MOU was the term used, "for PRI SLR," right? And this is a lot of PRI SLR property, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've been working on an MOU for how many years now, Mr. Buschak? I mean, are we going to get this done? Is it going to include parks? Okay.
So, the, the MOU does not get into specifics about land transactions or donations.
So, similar to what Councilmember Lovell was saying earlier, if we have ordinances in place, we can provide or create certainty.
That's correct.
On where we're going to get tax dollars to put parks. You got four parks here. You got five parks. You got a regional park. And if you're talking about four of those being 15-acre parks, you're looking at eight million bucks minimum for those. And then the regional park, which is bigger than all four of those together. So, you're looking at 15 million or more just for this area. And there's going to be a lot of houses in this area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I see the CIP. I saw your numbers, the other slide. I don't want to go back to that one. But how are you going to, Mr. Snook, just verbally, I don't want to, I don't want the number. I don't want the chart. How are you going to do this? How are you going to provide these parks to all these people? Because you don't have, I mean, I'm not as worried about the North piece. And I'm not worried about Todd George as much. I'm sorry. I mean, you got, you got, you got James A. Reed over there. You've got all that parkland at Woods Chapel, Lake Jacomo and everything. I am worried about this. So, like, how are you going to, how is this going to get done?
Well, right now, our funding source would be the sales tax. That's the funding source we would have available. You would not be able, with our sales tax, to do, to do these projects.
Yeah, sales tax is supposed to-
You might be able to do a couple of projects.
The sales tax needs to be evenly divided amongst the community because, you know, there's some people that don't live in new areas. And they need some maintenance on their stuff. So, question then is, how critical is it to get something across the finish line with regard to a park impact fee?
I would say it's pretty critical for us. It's going to, it's going to help us. It's not going to be the solution for us, but it's going to help us.
Is it critical enough that you can tweak these numbers if they don't, if they can't live with these numbers?
Yes, it's critical enough.
Because that's where we're headed tonight, is you need some guidance. And I know that you're going to leave here and if you're like, "Well, I don't know what the amount's going to be." Well, I think eventually, once we get out of the public hearing, we're not going to talk about numbers right now. We're going to have to look at these numbers. But you're saying that you're, it's critical that we get this so that you can account for these types of parks right here that, on this slide.
Correct.
Otherwise, you're going to have to prioritize. And it can choose who gets upgrades and who gets new parks and who doesn't.
And, and opportunity. There has to be an opportunity for us to be able to acquire land, too.
What's the part about the land dedication that's the hardest? Like, you've got somebody coming in, I mean, for you, not, not for the developer. I know the developer has to figure out what land they're going to give you, which means they're going to give you the, the one that they can't do anything with.
What's the hardest thing about land dedication for us?
Yeah.
What, what do I think it would be?
Can you, can you predict what land you might get in this area?
No, I think we'll be, I mean, we'll have to have conversations with each development. And based upon that development, the land dedication ordinance would identify how much land that needs to be.
So, it's going to come down to how good of a negotiator you are?
Pretty much.
And you're going to have to go to, go to battle with each one of them?
Perhaps.
Okay. Was it fun, when he mentioned Lowenstein and Streets West Prior? Was that a fun negotiation?
It took a while.
I remember that. I remember all the planning, even though I love that development. There was a lot of complaining about the negotiations. Okay. There's other people that want to speak tonight. We got to get to them and let them point out what they would like to point out. And then we have to get through the public hearing, close it so that we can start having a conversation. And the conversation, though, I just need everybody to know, is going to be about, do we want a park impact fee? Then we can determine the amount later. But I do think it's only fair to give you an idea of what we're thinking if we're even willing at all to do a park impact fee. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes, sir.
That's what you want to hear?
I would like to hear that.
All right. Then I would like to ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak. And we will start with people that are in, what's my, what's my sheet say? I always say in favor or in opposition. It says first on here, we'll go with people that are in, I don't even look at this anymore. It's been so long. In favor, whoever is in favor first, please come forward. I see a park board member striding this way.
John Ellis, 2635 Northwest Asher's Lane. I've been on the park board for my fourth year now. Been involved with the city for quite a long time and, and a lot of different projects. And this has been a great meeting to attend. I just want to acknowledge the dialogue tonight has been great because you've exposed probably about half of what I was really going to focus on when I came up and really talked about this. And it was creating structure around what we're trying to do and having parks rec as a, at the table with some, something that really ties them to the development process so that they can follow through with projects like that. And right now, there's no structure. And it's, it's, there's a seat there at development, but there's nothing tying them or tying that relationship with the developers to be able to help follow through and cover that gap. And, and really, the, the big thing about this is that the, the gap, we know that the sales tax dollars are there. We know that they're committed. We know that there's expectations from the people in the community to not only have what they have, but also grow and expand on the same level in areas like this. And so, I think that really on behalf of the park board, I just want you to know, we, we've been through this. We, we looked through the land dedication. We felt like there was some ties to that that really kind of put us in certain spaces where we're going like, oh, well, we have to do this, or we're going to get land that we really don't want or isn't really ideal for what we know that the, the community and the people are going to expect. And we feel like we have the commitment that we have to be able to follow through and make those things work in a timely manner. And so, I, I guess more than anything, just want to say, I appreciate the dialogue. I, I know your, your, your hearts are in the right place as far as being responsible with the funds economically and not make development. I've been on the development side. You feel attacked all the time on somebody trying to get more money out of you. And so, I, it, it, it makes sense to me that people don't want this. But I think it, it makes more sense to me to have structure. We're a proactive community. We've always been a proactive community through our strategic planning processes. We've, we've done so many great things in the community because of our quality communication. And we've worked our way through hard discussions. I like the way things are going here tonight as far as just getting an impact fee in place. I love the fact that this is reviewable on an annual basis. And we can really see what those needs are coming down the pipeline and be able to make those adjustments. I also like the fact that if somebody wants to do the land dedication, that ability's there. And, and I think we've really worked hard to really utilize Dave's expertise in this whole thing from the park board to be able to feel like we, we're coming through kind of a cutting-edge idea here that's really going to help us be more diversified in what the park board can do and be able to have those funds working as we're, we're going down the road. So, with that, I just want to let everybody know where the park board stands on it. And I appreciate the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Or anybody want to brag about David Buschak every meeting? All right, how about in opposition?
I think opposition's probably too strong a word. But my name's-
I think opposition's probably too strong a word, uh, but my name's Will Rutter with the Home Builders Association of, of Greater Kansas City. First, a little bit of, of levity, Councilman Felker, you appear to be, uh, much more in the ballpark of your final wrestling weight than I am. I've added the, uh, average weight of a, of an average kindergartner to my frame since my wrestling day has ended, so I have to commend you on that. We submitted through the clerk, a comment letter, which I understand was, was made available to you, so I won't elaborate beyond the points that were, uh, made in those, other than to give you some context as to what that, uh, what that, how that letter ought not be read, it shouldn't be read as, uh, "Opposition to Parks or Community Investments in Recreational Facilities." Certainly, as a residential construction representative, uh, we recognize, um, there are many elements of equality of life, um, that, that get calculated into a family's calculus, as to, uh, where they wanna raise their family, how they wanna spend their retirement years, many, many of those things. And, and recreation facilities certainly are one of them, and the proximity to those recreation facilities, uh, being of, of paramount importance. It is why, um, to the tune of, you know, several hundred acres, that, uh, private development has, uh, invested, uh, some of that finite land, uh, probably the most precious commodity in building and development, which is land, um, devoting that towards, uh, some quality of life recreational facilities within those, uh, developments. What was not in the letter that we shared, but was part of the discussion tonight, so I'm kinda calling an audible on what I wanted to, to share, um, a lot cost, uh, that developed property and the fixed costs associated with bringing a lot to a buildable point where you can go vertical on it, has historically accounted for between eighteen and twenty-two percent of the overall cost of a house that the consumer sees. So, for every cost associated on the, on the land development side, before you even start digging a hole, before you get a permit, um, your, your, your fixed development costs are baked into that final price point. So, one useful trick that can sometimes be used is, you take your overall lot price, multiply it by five, and you'll get a relatively accurate representation of what the final price point of the home is, is gonna be, within a few, you know, thousand dollars, obviously, people do all kinds of, of upgrades, appliances, those things are gonna have an impact on the final price point. But, I would just say that the earlier costs are incurred in the construction process, um, the more likely those costs are gonna be compounded and beyond what the original costs were. Uh, for example, you know, if you, uh, have a, a, for example, erosion control on your development, uh, that cost upfront is gonna be compounded over the life of the entire build of the house, or the, or the structure, whatever you're gonna put on that lot, uh, as opposed to a landscaping requirement, which is a cost incurred at the end, you know, to get your certificate of occupancy. So, uh, I would just say, you know, whatever fee is incurred at the outset is not necessarily just gonna be tacked on to that average price point at the end. Um, it's not gonna be fourteen hundred dollars, and that's gonna be fourteen hundred dollars to the consumer, chances are, if that's a construction loan, construction to perm, or it's, or it's financed altogether unless someone pays that fee upfront, that's gonna, um, that fourteen hundred dollars is gonna be subject to the same financing costs as the rest of the, of the construction of that project, which, you know, at a three percent mortgage rate is probably less impactful, six and a half percent, uh, and above today, is gonna be more impactful. So, it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar passing along to the consumer, it is going to have a compounding effect, uh, through, through the life of, of the build and, and ultimately, the, the property. Uh, we do know that as a country, we are, you know, depending on what media source you consume, uh, is, is millions of units of housing short of what we would need to be to adequately meet housing demand. And, where are those housing products coming in at price point? Certainly, much outside of the bounds of the average working family being able to get into, uh, into housing. Um, it, it's almost to the point where it doesn't even matter what it costs, because there's just nothing available, there's not enough being built, we're chronically underbuilt as a metro and as a country when it comes to housing. And, as the product, particularly single family, that is statistically most likely to be owned by the person that's occupying it, we are foregoing wealth accumulation for, for hundreds of thousands of families across the country, and thousands of families, uh, here in the Kansas City metro. So, it may seem, um, mundane or a little bit tedious for me to come before you, talking about a potential three hundred and fifty dollar per bedroom impact fee on housing, but, uh, that is one of the inherent disadvantages of building and development, is that I stand before you, uh, talking about, uh, opportunities for future homebuyers who don't know they're future homebuyers, those are theoretical people, people that will ultimately, eventually, uh, occupy, uh, the city as, as your fellow residents and, and future constituents, um, as opposed to, uh, current residents who have, um, uh, property tax rolls, voting records, you see them in the grocery store, those are actual people. So, it is one of the disadvantages, uh, that, that I'm faced with, and, and our organization is faced with, is helping communities, um, you know, forecast what, um, that, that future experience is going to be for people, not necessarily to create opportunities for every single person to, uh, be able to get into new construction, but to create the most amount of opportunities for the most amount of people. So, that is why, you know, we are spending our time in this room, and part of this conversation over the past several months, is because that every, um, uh, every, every additional cost compounds with every other cost. We can't silo these costs off and just say, "Well, it's just fourteen hundred here, it's just five hundred there." Um, we have to look at the entire breadth of the cost increases that have been incurred by, uh, building and development, ultimately, the homebuyer, um, as an aggregate disqualifier for, uh, for homeownership. And, as we see, um, the average, uh, age of a homeowner in our country today being forty-one years old, that number just fifteen years ago was thirty. So, we've seen a tremendous increase in the average age of a homeowner, which means we are, uh, losing out on opportunities for people to enter the equity accumulation phase of their life earlier on, which is certainly going to have longer-term impacts on their overall financial health and their, their ability to retire with dignity, and to participate, uh, in retirement, uh, fully while they're still healthy enough to do so. So, I, I just wanted to add some additional context to the, uh, the commentary that we provided to all of you, and, uh, appreciate your time and your consideration. And, and again, um, a reiteration of the HBA's offer in the past and, and well into the future, uh, to, to partner with the community, to be a, a, a resource, a context provider, as you seek to make the best decisions for your current and, and future residents and the, and the overall, uh, growth of your community. And you've got, uh, a beautiful community, um, it wins awards, it's deserving of them and, and many more. And so, uh, we're grateful to be a part of the, the past, uh, that's gotten Lee Summit to the point it is, and, in conjunction with the, the, the great leadership we've had here over the past, um, as well as an offer to continue to partner and invest in the community, so that, uh, more of your future residents can own where they live. Thank you.
All right, thank you, can you hold on a second? I mean, I got Will Rutter here, I'm gonna, you said we could, uh, tap into that context of the-
Sure.
-HBA, and you've, uh, you've, if you, if people don't know, you've worked all over the country, um, in really big, uh, metropolitan areas, bigger, much bigger than, than ours, right?
But none lovelier.
Thank you.
That's pandering, I apologize, strike that from the record, please.
So, um, I'll try to make this brief, I could talk to you all night, let me, believe me, um, I could, or I could listen to you all night, put it that way.
Backed opposite of my wife.
Yeah.
She gets tired of hearing me talk about housing every night.
Um, but I, 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 I just, you know, I gotta throw this out there, because you are an expert, um, so, um, if you had a pad-ready site, lot, for homebuilding, so you're gonna take out all the factors of, where's the sewer, and where's the water, and all that good stuff, um, and you're gonna take out all the factors of what road is, what specific road is it on, but just generally speaking, what characteristics drive the demand for that pad-ready site to build a home? I'll give you an example, 'cause I, this one, this one's too easy for me, schools, school district. So, if you were to pick the top maybe five, what would the top five be? Schools that create the demand to want to build a home on that specific lot?
Uh, schools, I would say, uh, proximity to the workplace, um, whether or not you work from home, or you're, you're intending to, to work outside of the home.
Uh-huh.
I think, you know, where, where you, where you work plays a, a major, major role.
Right.
Um, I would say that, um, the overall, uh, cost per square foot of what you could potentially put on that, on that, uh, pad site.
Well, but that's, that's, that's driven by demand.
Somewhat, um, I, I think a lot of it is due to the per-acre cost of the acquisition of the land in general, uh, that, that plays an outsized role, um, it's, it's really hard-
I mean, you, you can have a, a lot here and a lot here, and they're in different school districts, this one's gonna sell a lot more per square foot, so-
That's very true, that's very true. Um, I would say, um, access to, uh, services, proximity to, uh, police, fire, those kinds of things, EMTs particularly, um, as we look to add-
Public safety.
Yeah, public safety, because, you know, we need to, uh-
You gotta feel safe.
Make, make sure we are, uh, satisfying the need for an aging population as well, who are looking to divest themselves of the family home, you know, that pad site, depending on where it is, if it's close to a hospital, or-
Right.
-close to a, uh, proximity, a, a walkable distance-
Grocery stores.
-to downtown, you know, uh, be able to, uh, get those entertainment, that services, uh, I think is a, is a huge factor.
Would you, so, so I'm sorry, I'm not trying to lead you, 'cause you, but when you say that, walkability to downtown, I mean, it's a perfect lead-in for me to say, ask you, so also, walkability to a park? Is a part of that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, I think that, you know, given the fact that most pad sites or, or lots are in proximity, because those developers do add, uh, those, those amenities, those recreational facilities, whether it's a pool, or a walking trail, or, or something like that.
Yeah, like Hartman Park has the Rock Island Railroad now, and I, I bet you'll never be able to buy a house near there now, because of that, you know what I mean?
That's probably true, yeah.
Okay, fantastic, um, sorry, I took, had to take advantage of, of that, I, I love it, because not, I'm not just trying to get across the point of the parks, okay? I seriously am saying, schools is why we fight for our schools, public safety is why we fight for public safety in this community, um, I love that you said workplace, um, and then the downtown, we're reinvesting in all those things, and, um, I, I just wanted to hear if you felt parks was a part of that, too, so, I appreciate it.
Yeah, without question, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak in opposition? That wasn't really opposition, but it was very educational, thank you. Right, very good. Um, then, does the applicant care to respond to any, any, or make any further comment? You rest your case, okay? Um, hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session, is there any council discussion on this application? Yes, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can do comments now.
Yes, okay, so, I am, I love our parks, I think that they've played a huge role in me raising my children, um, I would like to see a way that we can still focus on, um, homeownership for the average family, people that can't afford, um, anything over a four-bedroom home, um, while also investing in our parks. So, I would like to see some sort of a compromise with the fees, um, maybe something like four bedrooms at a reduced fee, right now it's at fourteen hundred, I don't like it at fourteen hundred, as, Mr., is it Rutter or Rutter? Rutter, okay, that's what I thought, and then, okay, um, as Mr. Rutter had said, it, the fee is going to be higher than fourteen hundred, so I would like to see some sort of a compromise, maybe even something as, and I don't know how that plays in, because I know that you said it's gonna be one-bedroom apartments, 'cause there really aren't really one-bedroom homes, so you wanna still get the fee to the one-bedroom? I, I don't know, I, well, obviously, I'm not the numbers person, but I'm sure you can figure out something, but I would like to see a reduced fee, something that's not going to just completely shut the door on, um, attainable homes, and, um-
Are you okay with the commercial, the twenty cents?
You know, I, I-
Oh, thirty cents.
Thirty, it's thirty cents now, but I haven't, I haven't had anyone email me or push back on that thirty cents, so I, I don't, I'm pretty neutral on the, on the thirty cents as far as commercial, I mean, it did obviously go up from twenty cents, 'cause it was at twenty cents. I'm, I'm pretty neutral on that, I guess, I'm all for nice parks, so I'm also all for not taxing us and, like, placing fees on us a ton, so, if there is a way to make it lower, that's fine, but commercials not really, I think more the housing is what I'm more focused on, so, thank you.
Makes sense, thank you.
Oh, one other question, when you are coming up with the fees, I don't know, I know that you stated that maybe you'd sat down with the HBA KC, but is there any way that, like, when you're coming up with the fees, can, if you guys could communicate throughout that process, just so everyone's on the same page, I just think that that's super important, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor, you know, I, I've gone back and forth on this, and I was all ready to defend the impact fee, and then the mayor said the north side of town doesn't matter, and-
You're terrible.
So, now I've gotta go a different route, um, no, I just wanna make a couple of comments, I, I really had a hard time with this when it was brought up, because, just because we had worked on, um, finding some way to make, make housing more attainable, and we'd been working on it so long, and then we're getting a new, new fee suggested to us. But, then I did some math, which is extraordinary for me, um, we're looking at developing parkland on forty-two hundred acres around the city in the next decade or two, right? That's two-thirds the size of Raytown, so we're really developing a park system for a small city. So, I don't think there's any way around this impact fee, um, we're not gonna be able to do it with the sales tax, so, that kind of changed my mind. Um, I, so, I'm excited about some of the things that are coming forward, um, I'm really excited about Safety Town, even though all my kids are too old to do it, I used to do the little one, the old one, but, um, I would like to see maybe dropping down that four-bedroom a little bit, I do like the tiered that we discussed in CEDC, I do like the thirty cents on commercial, um, and that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those details and specifics, that helps.
And maybe a community center north of Colburn, thank you.
Well, he, you do have a park on that north piece that you wanna put in.
Be some opportunities.
There's a lot of people up there.
Yes, there is.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so I think the one thing that keeps coming back to, back to me here is, um, is this kind of predictability of some revenue streams, I think you did a really good job, I think, from our, from my perspective, is seeing the numbers, seeing the shortfall, seeing the projects we have in line, um, knowing that, you know, um, we've got a few years left on the sales tax, um, and so I just, and I also believe that there is a cost in every development, it's just whether you see it, or you don't, or it's predictable, or it's not, and I think this gets us a seat at the table every time, unequivocally, without a doubt, and we need a seat at the table. And, um, anything we can do to make it easier, um, for all parties, um, to work quickly, swiftly, to get the things accomplished that we need to, and we certainly see with the PRI land in that slide that was up there, the need there, um, and just, you know, when it comes to, you know, attainable housing seems to be something that, that's brought up, and certainly sensitive to all of that, I, I mean, I think there are some serious macroeconomic factors that are, are causing, wreaking havoc on our housing, and, um, I don't, I mean, certainly fees play a part of that, but, I mean, we don't have to go into economics one-on-one here, but there's a problem, and it's, um, it, it's probably not the park impact fees or, or tapping fees, um, inflation might be one, um, you know, just so many other factors that are involved in, and I don't know how we solve those things, um, because there's people far higher up the food chain that seem to be controlling more of that, um, than us here, so, you know, we'll do whatever we can to combat it, but I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the park board being here, I know you guys have worked on it. As far as like a fee structure, um, I don't necessarily have a problem with the way it's set up right now, um, I'd be amenable to like three hundred, six hundred, nine hundred, twelve hundred, if that twelve hundred cap was on, on four, and then up, um, that would lower it a little bit, um, and then the commercial fee, just making sure that, that, I can't remember if you said it was thirty percent, or-
Thirty cents, thirty cents a square foot.
Thirty cents per square foot, um, and it sounds like that might be reasonable, again, it's kinda hard, but I know we'll have that opportunity, I think that would be my direction on that, Mayor, so-
Yeah, thirty cents, you said you're okay with that, and then, uh, you gave the three hundred, six hundred, nine hundred, twelve hundred, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Representative Tim Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm somewhat like Councilmember Edson, coming into tonight, um, I was somewhat ambivalent, I wasn't sure exactly where I stood, uh, with the whole concept, and, and, so, Mr. Snook, I appreciate, uh, all the data that, uh, that you've presented and put before us, uh, all the thought and effort you and your team have put together, working with CEDC, I really do appreciate that. Um, that being said, I also appreciate the board, the, the park board, and, and all of your time and effort put into this as well, and, and I think at the end of the day, we all want the same thing, I mean, that, that's, that's a given. Um, and, um, obviously, I think collectively, uh, you know, we're concerned, just, you know, as the comments Mr. Rutter said, you know, over- overall-
Ruder.
Ruder, Ruder, like Rudy, Ruder. All right. My apologies. Appreciate your comments as well because I think, you know, that's, it's just good information to have as we make this decision. So at the end of the day, I think I am in favor of the impact fee. Mr. Ellis mentioned the word "structure," and, and I think that's really key. That's what's resonating in my mind, is the fact that I, I've been a developer, commercial developer in the past, my past life, and, and I agree, Mr. Ellis. I think as a developer, you hate to be nickled and dimed every time you're, you're building something. And so mindful of that. And so I, I just think that, but we do, you do need structure as, that gives you some leverage, and it tells, shows investors, developers, that the city's really thought through this idea. We're being intentional, we're being strategic, and you're right, we are about that here, here in this community. But, but I, I do think that the attainable housing values and pricing is something we do, we can be a little bit more intentional about. And with that being said, I, I would say that the fee structure maybe needs to be looked at a little bit more. And I'm also sensitive to the commercial side as well. If we can do more digging, more homework on true comparisons, I, I was called and contacted by commercial developers and that are concerned. So I, I think we need to just put more, more thought into that to just massage the numbers probably in that area, but also the four-bedroom pricing. You know, Councilmember Lovell mentioned another structure. I'm open in, you know, those kind of tiered ideas, but I don't know. I just think we need to look at that a little bit more deep, so.
Okay, so residential, you're thinking, needs to come down a little bit?
Yeah.
And then-
Commercial as well.
Okay, both, okay.
Yes. So I think that's all I have.
And you, yeah, you mentioned comparator cities.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I have. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. So I, I think where I stand is, and I've been pretty consistent even in CEC, CDC meetings, is that I, I don't want, I don't want anything on residential. I'm not in favor of charging any more than what these people are having to pay already. I would like to see the commercial go down. I don't want that to be a reason why somebody's choosing another city who doesn't tack on yet another fee, especially one that's not really going to affect them per se. I don't want that to be a reason that they're not coming to us. I love what Mr. Ruder said about remembering that, you know, this is, as far as the single-family homes, it's, it's helping people, you know, build the personal wealth, and we, we're lacking that right now, not just in Lee Summit, but in general. And I don't want to be a stumbling block to prevent somebody. I know you can say, oh, it's just this, but that's just another fee that we're adding on to make somebody pay more than what they're probably wanting to pay already. And, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable saying, eh, it's just this, because what's just this to maybe me or somebody else up here is a lot to somebody else. And I don't want to forget that because we're not, not everybody's as comfortable as other people are, and I don't want to, I want to be sensitive to that and not say, eh, it's just this, because that might be a whole paycheck for somebody, and that's a lot of money to save up. So I, I want to make sure we're sensitive to that. And so I, I, I absolutely will not vote if it's yes, even in the future, if it's for anything for, for a single-family home. Commercial, again, I would like to see that go down, even below the twenty cents we originally said. Again, you're getting more than what you were getting before, and I do want to also say that I'm, I struggle with the fact that we're, we're discussing it the way we are. We have the, we have this sales tax in place, and things will get accomplished, just maybe not as quickly as we're wanting to. So I, I think we're maybe being a little bit overzealous. Yes, it would be, of course, it'd be great to have all these things on your list, absolutely. But at the same time, we don't need it all right now. Sometimes good things are worth waiting for. And, and already what's been built, it's wonderful. I mean, you've done a great job. And no, I don't, I don't ever get anybody complaining about, ah, we don't have enough parks, we don't, they love the parks we have. So I don't, I don't, I think we need to remember that's not going to stop. As we grow as a city, that's going to continue. So I, I want to make sure we're not misunderstanding the fact that just because we're going to grow, we're freaking out because we can't build new parks. We can because we're going to keep doing what we've been doing, and we've been doing it well. And so I want to make sure that we're not misconstruing, like, we're going to grow and we don't know what to do unless we put in more fees and taxes or whatever. So, so I want to, again, I just want to make sure we remember that because I don't think we're going to lack anything. I think it's really just, what we're wanting is the above and beyond, which is great. But again, the term I've used before is it's not, those aren't necessarily the necessities per se. I know you, you think differently, but, and I, we'll, we'll achieve them, just not right here, right now, all at once. But that's, that's just my two cents, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, fellow members of council for your thoughts, and thank you, Mr. Snook, for your preparation, and Mr., Mr. Ellis and Chair Bivens, thank you for being here as well, and representing the other members of the Park Board as well for your efforts. And thank you, Mr. Ruder, for being with us tonight and sharing your perspective. So the, the things I've been thinking about, I'm going to say first that I'm in, I'm in favor of the park impact fee. I think it's important for us to stay ahead and not play catch-up in terms of what lies ahead of us. We're on the cusp of significant growth when we have those various areas of development coming in. The ability to actually do something as that's occurring, I think, is a pretty important, a degree of flexibility I think we need to be able to have. Frankly, you know, we've, the way this has been, that we viewed it today, doesn't even fully allow us to do that. Allows us to make progress, but it, but it does not actually keep us on a path, or at least what we would see as an ideal path for the future. So I think that it, even as it's presented, I know council members have voiced today kind of a reduction, and I, I guess I would support that. I'm fine with it as it's been presented today. But I'll, I'll support those movements that have been stated already, because I'm in favor, again, of the fee and of, again, at least keeping, keeping it within the, the bounds that different council members have expressed already. I think our conversation about affordable or attainable housing, yeah, I do think there is, obviously, it will impact, I mean, if, you know, three thousand dollars, so just, I'll say, I'll throw three thousand dollars as an impact fee, or two thousand, and then put a, put a little extra interest in that's been built into the construction loan. So three thousand bucks over thirty years is about fifteen bucks a month. So I, it's still an impact, it's still important that we as council members do think about the impact of these things. And yeah, that's, I mean, I, there certainly are times in my life, and there's been times, I'm sure many, where there are those, those dollars, every dollar counts. I think as we're talking about new, building new, because this is, again, this is building new properties. We're not going back to the existing homeowners to do this. So this is something that'll directly benefit them because it has to be spent in that vicinity, right? So we're not just taking this and, taking it all up to the Northland for Phyllis. She has a purpose after council, council now, you know, bring all the parks up there. Anyway, so I, I'm not going to say more, Mayor. Just, again, appreciate the presentation. I appreciate it.
You're okay with each amount.
Certainly supported.
Yep. Thank you. Councilmember DeMora.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I started this discussion, I mean, I just was fortunate to be the first one to speak. I am not also in favor of a impact fee for any of the bedroom choices. I, I just think, and, and I will reiterate, that we are losing people coming to this city because they cannot afford houses under four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And, and the fact that we have, and I'm going to say it again, five hundred less six-year-olds than seniors tells me that people are not coming here with small families. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just a fact that's happening. Of course, as with anybody, you become more affluent, you move back in, or you move to Lee Summit when you have older kids, so the, the high schools aren't hurting. But that is a, that is a major barometer that we are losing the, the application of people. And, and really, even the fifteen dollars a month for thirty years, it's the qualification for a mortgage. All those costs, as Mr. Ruder says, all those costs go into it. That fourteen hundred at, at the current time is marginalized. That fourteen hundred grows to whatever. And then, again, you know, the, the tap fees and every other new fee that comes along, you're, you're, you're restricting forty-five people, forty-five families per thousand, and it's, it's, it's just a fact that's there. So I, I am not in favor of anything on, on residential. Commercial, I feel like we're in competition with the two cities I mentioned. One, seven cents a foot, the other one's twelve cents. I would like to see that fee dropped. And, and I would, I would favor a, a commercial rate. I'd like to see that fee dropped around fifteen cents. So we're, we're in competition with other cities for commercial and non-residential buildings. We don't want to be four times larger than another city. So fifteen cents commercial, zero residential. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, you want to add to, or? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that if I vote yes for the fee, then they'll come back before us with the fee amount, and at that time, if I don't agree with the fee amount, like, if I feel like it's too high, then I can vote no.
I'll summarize all of it again, yep.
You are, okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
I will. I'll summarize it right now.
Thanks.
I just want to be able to get some of my comments in too, but I want to make sure everybody got their chance. So I just, I see this a lot like I do the, when I was talking to Mr. Ruder about what's important for a house, and school district is amazing, and public safety. We can impact public safety. Being able to get to work, like you mentioned, that's pretty phenomenal, and that's why we want to bring jobs here, so people have opportunities to work here and live here. And then, and then he, he said, you know, to walk downtown and parks and things of that nature. I know he's concerned about affordability and such, and I know that the example I used tonight with the excise tax, because I'm in commercial real estate, I can't stand the excise tax. It kills me because I have to tell someone that you're going to pay twenty thousand dollars to put your new business in here, and they say, what for? And it's like, because of all the traffic you're going to bring to this location. And it's, it's really tough, but it's how we're able to reinvest in our communities. So I just, it's one of those hard decisions we have to make, but I, I think for me, it's a decision you make based on what do the citizens want? They want, they want our schools protected, they want public safety, they want their parks. So how do we do that? I think we try to provide some certainty with this, or we've been referring to it as structure. I call it certainty. What's the dollar amount that you have to pay to come, you know, per door when you come to Lee Summit? I think we can, we can do that. We don't have to decide that amount tonight, though we're getting to feel. I think you're getting to feel. I think that had this been in place, this is kind of my key thing, had this been in place twenty years ago, we'd be in a pretty good position because you'd have either a nest egg to, to, for some of these projects that you don't have enough money for or not. But we need to get something in place, is my point. So when it comes to the amounts, I think of best practices, Mr. Snook. I think of, I don't really want to be like a couple of people have mentioned. I don't really want to be way higher than our comparator cities. I don't mind being in the mix. So I'd be willing to come down on the residential some. And on the commercial, I know that you haven't had pushback on it, but I don't really want to be, I don't know if there's twenty cents out there, or if there's thirty cents out there. I, I just want to be in the, you know, I don't mind being at the top of the range, I just don't want to be the highest. I don't, that's not how I want to be known. So if we could tweak these numbers and dial them down once it comes back before council, I'd be, I'd be more comfortable. I know Councilmember Lovell said three hundred, six hundred, nine hundred. I, I, maybe even fifty dollars less than that. Maybe it's, you know, four-bedroom house for a thousand bucks. And I know you don't want to hear that, sir, but I just, I think that that's something we could maybe, maybe get more people, get everybody more comfortable with, and be really happy with our decision going forward. And if, if we could do that, that's great. I do have one last thing, though, and I'm, I'd have to get this with the council. I have to put this on the board, on the table for them to discuss, maybe, and that is the effective date. Just, I think the effective date needs to be moved back. October first does not, if we're going to hit these developers that are already in process, and they've already done their financial analysis, they have to be able to go back to their lender, say, hey, I got through this first phase, but these next phases, I have to pencil in these, these new numbers. I, I don't see how it's, it's, we've got to give them time to, to get their building permits pulled right now. And the same thing goes for the small home builder. There are people right now getting ready to pull permits in our city, and, or they may be, and this gives them more time to plan. So I would push for a January first effective date instead of October first. Gives another four months. I don't know what council thinks about that, but, yep. Maybe that's a little bit more tolerable for the developers that are, have already been through here. So I do appreciate everything tonight. We're going to read this ordinance, and we'll see how this goes next. But this ordinance that we're going to read is to put a park impact board, park impact fee in place at a later date with the schedule of fees to be determined. And Mr. Snook, when you come back, you've got to have these comparator cities and got to get us comfortable with the dollar amount, because I don't want to, I don't want to be divided on this. I mean, I, I know a couple of people have already stated, and I absolutely respect, they're not in favor of anything on the residential, and I respect it. I just think that, you know, we need, we need something we can all get behind when you come back with those schedule of fees. Is that, is that saying it right? Okay. So does that make sense, Councilmember Pryor? Did I summarize it okay, or do you have a question?
No, that, yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that I can change my vote if the fees come back and I feel like they're too high. So, yeah, okay, thank you.
Just for clarity, the ordinance does have a start date of October first. So if there's, if you want to-
I'd like to amend that.
Yes, you would need to make that amendment tonight.
I would like someone to help me amend that, please. Yep, we'll amend it after you move. Okay. Councilmember Lovell?
Yeah, just asked a question. So would it, so if we amend it to January one, like, does it have anything to do with if people have pulled permits, like, you know, or, or is it just like, like, if your project, you might be working on your project now, but you, how does that date work, I guess?
I don't know. I'll have to ask Mr. Dunn.
Just trying to understand better. If we set that date, you know, what that means.
Setting the date.
Josh Johnson.
Johnson, you want to come forward? Yep, that's fine. Mr. Dunn, you can just chill.
Joshua Johnson, Director of Development Services. It would be when you pull the permit. If you're in, in the middle of getting your permit reviewed, we would not charge the fee.
Say it again. If you're in the middle of what?
Pull, if you're in the middle of your permit, like, staff is reviewing your permit, you would not be charged the fee. It would be when you pay the fees that you would, when you submit, excuse me, when you submit the building permit is when we'd start issuing the charge.
Okay, so if we, if we did pass this, and it went in effect January first, December thirtieth, you might get a bunch of applications. Okay?
All right, we're good.
Thank you. All right. We can still discuss. We can, we can have Councilmember Lovell read this. No, Councilmember Felker. Councilmember Felker, would you please read Bill number twenty-four dash zero four one?
Mayor, I've moved to advance the second reading, Bill number twenty-four dash zero four one, an ordinance adding Article Three, Parks and Recreation Impact Fees to Chapter Nineteen, Parks and Recreation, in the Lee Summit Code of Ordinances.
All right, I have a motion to adopt Bill number twenty-four dash zero four one. Could I get a second? Can I get a verbal second?
Second.
All right. Can you put that in? Can you put that in? Ms. Fowler, R. Curry. All right. Councilmember Fel- Felker has motion to move to second reading. Bill number twenty-four dash zero four one, Councilmember Lopez, if you'd change that for me, please, has seconded it because he did a verbal discussion. Yes, Councilmember Edson.
Mayor, I have an amendment.
Yes, please.
I would like to amend the ordinance to have an effective date of January one, twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion to amend to January one, twenty twenty-five as an effective date from Council, Councilmember Edson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Hodges has seconded that motion. Discussion on the amendment of January one. Okay? Could I, can I go ahead and do the vote, or do I have to roll call this? You need to roll call this, Councilman, or Trish R. Curly?
Yep, I can get that in the system. It's really delayed.
Okay, well then let's do a roll call, though, for, on the, on the motion to amend.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Level?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker?
Aye.
Councilmember DiMaro?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Prior?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Baird?
Aye.
Okay, so we now have an amended, uh, motion, uh, to move to a second reading, Bill number twenty-four dash zero four one with a new effective date of January one. Discussion. But we can still debate the, the numbers later, if it's schedule of fees. Another presentation you're going to have to do. All right, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does pass six-two. Probably won't win those two over unless we get rid of the residential fees, but understood though, and respected. Okay. Wow. How long did that take? Mr. Snook, you're not going to live this one down. We're going to make you, I want to know, Mr. Dunne, how long that took and see if it's the record for the year, and we blame it on Joe Snook. Thanks for coming again. All right, um, we're going to go to public comments. You need a break after public comment, please? After public comment. Yeah, we can take a break, everybody, after public comment. We got, yeah, yeah, we'll do a public, we'll do a break after public comment. Ms. Volunwider.
Teresa Volunwider, fifty-two zero one Northeast Maybrook Road. This is a video that I got from the, um, did a public records request from the police department. It's from November twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, two and a half days before I was It is a conversation between Officer Iceberg and Stephanie Mullins. And I won't play the whole video, I'm just playing a part of it.
Okay, so, and, right. This is what I need you to fill out. So you're going to have to print legibly in black ink.
You can get the whole video if you'd like, get the whole video.
Last name, first name, middle initial, phone number, don't worry about email address, don't worry about social media. Add sixty zip, your role, your phone. You can use-
Property lines and stuff like that, when the fact that, so even, so the fact that the city has said that that's not her property is not enough.
You hear it, okay.
For her to not come onto that section.
Well, the city hasn't said it's not her property. The city has said that they have a right of way on that property. So-
Well, there's actually a, a section where they say that, that this section had to be removed, which is the one they cut out because that is not her property.
So was that the ones that were right up? Where was that at?
Yeah, so like now she has the, um, the bricks down there, so she came out today when they, they cut it out, and then she came and laid these bricks on that section that they have said to her is not your property.
Did you notify the codes department? Was that the one that you notified the codes department about?
Um, well, I just came home to, I saw those bricks there, which means, again, and I'd have to go back, I saw her on the property today, on my reading camera.
Was it Derek who said that he went?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he called. All right, so when they come out here, they'll actually look at that. So hopefully they'll take a look at it and see what's up. Is that, so, when you have a right, like, that roadway, where that road comes through over there, probably even going over to wherever that dang little pin is at over there, that roadway, I mean, that's on her property. But of course, the city has a right of way on it for public use, so the public can use it, right?
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
That makes sense. So she can't have stuff that's in that right of way that's for public use. And the city goes, finally asserted their authority on it and said, no, we're not going to allow stuff to be here.
You know, what's really sad too is, and, and I mean this completely, is that I said to the city a long time ago, and we missed all, because I said, the government should show that driveway can go there because if it isn't supposed to be there, she is going to make our lives miserable. And I said, what if we just extended the driveway to where it's like out of, and, you know, I even brought that up to Derek, I'm like, what if we just move the driveway and just get her to leave us alone? And he's like, because she won't leave us alone.
No, she won't. Yeah, like I said, that driveway hooks up into the right of way, so you're absolutely fine. Like that, this road is not going anywhere. The only time that right of way would ever go away is if all of a sudden someone said, nope, we don't want that road anymore. Bull does it on down, and then it would go back to being her property. But that's not going to happen, that road's been there.
Ms. Volunwider, you've got, you've used your three minutes, so you need to explain what it is you want to say, so I can take this break.
And you can see how it follows fence lines, which is how roads, you know, did back in that time. So, anyway, um, I'll-
That was November twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, two and a half days before I was arrested on that driveway within three feet of the actual pavement of the road. That was consistent with what Officer Iceberg said to me on August eleventh of twenty twenty-two. I'm wondering why were there two officers that were uninformed about that and made the choice to say that I was trespassing when Officer Iceberg recognized that that was my property? It was public right of way and that I am the public. I'm not finished.
You're, you're, you need to finish in the next, I'll give you thirty seconds, but then we're taking a break.
I'll continue to overturn stones for you so that you can learn why this happened. But I'll tell you why I think it happened, and that is because there is a sanitary sewer that is through my property without the benefit of an easement, and sanitary sewers are extremely important.
Thank you. We are going to take a ten-minute break.
Welcome to the Lease Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material-
A bunch of members running from different deals, and this guy said he was from, he was running for District Two, I don't know which, which one, because I can't wholly see, but said he was District Two, and he wants to put an end to the thirteen cent gas tax. And I didn't know that a city can pose a gas tax, only state and federal government.
There's no gas tax, sir.
There is no gas tax. So whoever this gentleman from District Two is running is, is giving out falsified information.
I didn't hear it.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I wanted to find out, because I didn't think there was a gas tax. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Lease Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our, you know, our fluorescent yellow, green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the, the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's, uh, lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is, it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done, uh, cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller, and that's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just, uh, taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crises, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me, I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, nine eighty-two, then route.
Officers in route, nine fourteen, armed, drawn, ready.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe, I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you, I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you? Is, can some, if they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lease Summit Police, can we help you?
My husband has-
In twenty twenty, we had seven hundred and twenty-two mental health-related calls for service. Twenty twenty-two, by that time, one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of crisis intervention team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call nine-one-one is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this, this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago, my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's, that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, and getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them, you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that, uh, that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there and it was a big African tortoise, probably sixty pounds, walking down the road. And they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner, I'm the manager of Lease Summit Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here, you have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. Lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walking of dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose, they can run together, and we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our, our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our Sally Port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals, we have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So, this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over two hundred reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long. You can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals. And we have very dedicated people back there. And they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold. And then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have to go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them. You spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered and all their vaccinations up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything in our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go. And we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home. Tarzan's got lots of energy. He's got a weird meow. Bell bell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats. She'll kind of get her grumpy face going. And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. You know, they are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats run around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was gardening some attention. And so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Do I do this job? Oh, dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them, and finding them homes. And yeah, absolutely animal lover.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station Three. Fire Station Three was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon-cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station Three, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing, as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities, as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports, and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store, and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift, as well as their own pantry. And then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out.
Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. We are on... Proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. That's Member Lovell. Would you please read Bill Number 24-042?
I move to advance the second reading, Bill Number 24-042, An Ordinance Permitting the Code of Ordinances, Section 12-4, Use of City Staff and Resources Prior to an Election to Modify the Terms Thereof to Coinide with the First Date of Candidate Filing.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 24-042, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-042, An Ordinance Permitting the Code of Ordinances, Section 12-4, Use of City Staff and Resources Prior to an Election to Modify the Terms Thereof to Coinide with the First Date of Candidate Filing.
You have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 24-042, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next is Proposed Ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read Bill Number 24-043?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, Bill Number 24-043, An Ordinance Vacating a Portion of a Certain Easement Located at 1020 Northwest Pryor Road in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to, no, motion to, yes, move to second reading, Bill Number 24-043, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously. Thank you. Next is Proposed Ordinances, second reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read Bill Number 24-027?
I move for the adoption of Bill Number 24-027, An Ordinance Approving a Preliminary Development Plan for Land Located at 111 Southwest Rain Tree Plaza Drive, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
You have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 24-027, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, just as I did last week, recusing on this due to a conflict of interest.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted seven zero with one recusal and one absent. Okay, next is Councilmember DeMoro. Would you please read Bill Number 24-039?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption, Bill Number 24-039, An Ordinance Approving Change Order Number One to the Guaranteed Maximum Price One Agreement with McCall Gordon Construction Company for the Downtown Market Plaza Project, an increase of $835,918 for a revised guaranteed maximum price of $6,584,375 and an increase of 15 calendar days.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 24-039, by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ehl, maybe just a question or two. And I'm going to, I think I understand some things here, but I just, I'm going to ask, and then maybe you can help clarify if I misunderstand. But this process for guaranteed maximum price, like the phrase there obviously tells me, hey, we've got a maximum price of, you know, six, whatever. I know this is the revised price, so the previous number, whatever that was. But what I believe I understand is that in this scenario, you know, so in my mind, layman's perspective, I think, well, that means I'm not going to have change orders down the road. But what's occurred in this instance was, in particular, this is the stormwater vein, whatever we're doing, I'm pointing to my left, but that general direction, Johnson and so forth, Second Street. There were identified things that weren't anticipated or weren't in the initial, I'm not going to use the word bid, but give me some words here to help me understand.
So the majority of the issue here is added scope is really what it is. And that, a lot of that scope was added at the city's direction, particularly related to sanitary sewer. So as we started going, there was a sanitary sewer project, capital improvement sanitary sewer project that has a benefit of having work occur at the same time that we're in the intersection here for Second Street in particular. And so we accelerated the design of that piece of the project that wasn't originally contemplated. So the difference with this change order, which you always have a change order for added scope, but the reason why there is a change order for this guaranteed max price is because it's not that it wasn't anticipated work per se. It was a whole new scope item associated with the project.
So what's been added might be sitting somewhere on a different project sheet that we were going to deal with at another time, with another set of funds, with perhaps even with a different contractor. Is that like an accurate way of kind of understanding it in terms of, was it in the CIP?
Yes, it's a portion of a CIP project where we would have, we received some benefits by combining it with this scope of work, also limiting the disruption to Second Street closure primarily. And that's a major piece of it. There are a few other things associated with this that were added scope, such as, you know, additional excavation during the demolition process. And we did run into a pretty significant utility conflict as well that was resulted in scope changes as a result of it. So caveat is it's major scope additions that really make up this change order.
Good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ehl. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That passes seven in favor, one against. Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Tim Lopez, would you please read Bill Number 24-037?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill Number 24-037, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of an Amendment to an Agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and McCall Gordon Construction Company to Set Guaranteed Maximum Price Two for the Downtown Marketplace Project in the Amount of $22,506,605.
You have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 24-037, by Mayor Tim Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That also passes seven in favor, one against. Thank you. And Councilmember Edson, would you please read Bill Number 24-038?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of Bill Number 24-038, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of an Amendment to an Agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and McCall Gordon Construction Company to Set Guaranteed Maximum Price Three for the Downtown Market Plaza Project in the Amount of $36,5,638.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, Bill Number 24-038, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's also seven one, in seven in favor, one against. And that takes us to committee reports. Let's remember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have public works here on Monday at 4:30. I get to chair, because Councilmember DeMoro is going to be gone. And then I get to chair CEDC on Wednesday at 5:00. So I'm in charge next week.
Yes, you are.
You might call a meeting, Mayor, and chair for you.
Oh, now you're talking.
Not the first time that's happened.
Probably her last chance. Don't plan on leaving town again.
When do I need to post that?
Councilmember Lovell.
I got to chair my first finance and budget meeting yesterday and did an amazing job, I'm sure of it. I think it was a 10-minute meeting. But we did, that was a chance to kind of go through those schedule fees that we did talk about today. And certainly appreciate all the work staff did to put that together. And that's it, really. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So council comments. So I do have one thing to report. There was an EDC meeting today. And the board members have spent the last couple of weeks meeting with council members. Councilmember Felker was, took the initiative and task of trying to get us all together. Well done, sir. Because it sounds like those meetings were very cordial, and people got to hear each other out and hear different points of view and such. So I went to the council meeting today, or the EDC meeting. And there was quite a bit of discussion. And they were, I wasn't sure they were going to get anything out. So I was like, here I go again. I'm going to have a hard time reporting out to everyone what the decision or what actions they've taken. Because a lot was discussed in an hour and a half period. So at the end of the meeting, though, they went ahead and wanted to make sure that they conveyed to the council their desires. And so they put it in the form of a motion and a second. And it did get voted for with regard to how they want to move forward with us. So I did not get the motion from them. It was actually a rather long motion. So I had to write it down from memory after the meeting, which was just a few hours ago. So basically, in this motion, they're saying, hey, after, you know, meeting with council members the last couple of weeks, the EDC desires to engage and work with the city council. They include stating their intention to eventually draft, or excuse me, approve those bylaws that we've drafted to reorganize the board as well and eventually pursue a PSA with the city. And they said that, and somehow in there, they also said that, indicated that they would appoint current, they would appoint members to their current vacant board member, direct. There's like four or five spots missing. So they're going to appoint those board members via their current bylaws. And then, once they draft new bylaws, they'll have to add some more members if they adopt the bylaws that have been drafted because it adds some different community partners and such. So these are, this is, you know, this is, I think, an indication of a bunch of positive conversations that went around. I think they're wanting to move forward. Councilmember Felker also, after a long meeting with me and a couple of other board members, and Mr. Dunning drafted a timeline, which he didn't get to me until today because we only met last night. So I've tried to look at it in the few minutes I've had between meetings today. And it's a starting point. It's, I don't think some of the timelines we can meet. But let's, you know, so we need to discuss them so that we don't set timelines that are too aggressive. But if we did pursue this route, we would, it would take us, you know, another five to six months to get through it. However, I just want you all to know that they, you know, they're still willing to put the time in, is what they're saying. And they appreciated very much all the meetings that they had and the fact that the council engaged with them. And I think that... And I think that I told them that if, as they were considering doing this motion, that I'll put it on the March 19th agenda, so I need to be able to articulate what it is that they are really conveying, what message they're conveying. So that's when, I mean, they, you know, that's why it was nice that they put it in the form of a motion, so I can get that, put it in front of you and talk about how the council wants to move forward. So we're going to be gone next week, a bunch of us to MML, or not MML, NCL, NLC, NLC, National League of Cities in Washington DC. But when we come back the next week, we'll put this on the agenda and we need to respond. You know, that's good faith. They met with us, we met with them, that's good faith. They put a motion out there, I don't know what you want to call it, a resolution, Mark Dunning, maybe? What do you call that? Resolution that they put forward? A communication to us and they approved it, so the appropriate thing is for us to respond. And we can, we can go into the details of that in the next meeting, but you know, they certainly don't want to spend six months and not put this together. They want to convey that they do want to put this eventual PSA together, service agreement. They definitely want that. And they, I think they're more upfront about, let's, let's make sure that this is clearly understood, that we do want a partnership, an agreement where the city is investing in the EDC.
Councilmember Edson.
So I assume that request for a PSA is a request for money?
Yes, eventually they want to get there. And I think that, you know, they've been avoiding saying that out loud, but a couple of them said, why are we saying this out loud? Because we don't really want to go on by ourselves, is what some of them were saying. Now that, I can't say that was everybody's opinion, which is concerning to think that they want to do it on their own, because I don't think that would work. But that was not the majority. The majority said, let's make sure it's known that we do want the city to work, work with the city and we would like the city to eventually be comfortable with a PSA.
Right, thank you.
Yep. All right, and so I'll put it on there, March 19th. Mr. Dunning, do not. Right. Okay, and then the great news, does anybody want to say the great news from the Missouri House of Representatives today? Go ahead, Councilmember Pryor, you make that announcement.
Okay, well, I'm not completely clear though, because Raymore put out a statement that said that it passed, but then it said that it was actually just passed the first time and it's got to pass again, correct? So it passed, but it has to pass a second time.
Yeah, but you know.
But it passed. So 30 people voted no and then the rest of the people, however many that were, like, voted yes, and then one person, I guess, didn't vote. So it was yes, overwhelmingly passed.
We needed to pass again, of course, and then we needed to get to the Senate floor for a vote, because I think it will pass on the Senate floor, but I don't know if it will ever get to the floor for a vote.
And thanks to John Patterson, because he.
Absolutely.
Did awesome by getting it out there to vote, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Other council comments?
Nice to have you back. Yes, please.
I was going to wait another week or so, but, no, that's all right. That's okay. Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
You can pass.
No, that's okay. You know, something like what my family's gone through, obviously, the past few weeks is just something that you never imagined. I think all of you in this room probably understand that. And, you know, I talked to many of you out there, all the cards, the emails, the texts, the voicemail messages, that, that love and that, the great thoughts and prayers is the only way you get through something like this. So, you know, I personally would like to thank everybody up here on the dais, but then all of you out there as well. I think I've heard from all of you. And there's a lot in the room, a lot of people that are not here in this room as well, but it just kind of shows, you know, obviously this became a regional, kind of a national thing because of, you know, just the stage that, when that happened. But, you know, Vanessa and I have talked a lot about this and like, this just validates and confirms why we live here. And so we really, really just want to tell you guys, thank you, and we appreciate you all very much and we love this community. You know, this just solidified, this is home, you guys are family and we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Top that, Mr. Dunning.
Man, that's, yeah, that's tough. More good news though, that we learned last night that I know I shared with you, but might as well speak about publicly. So Moody's, we had a call with Moody's Rating Agency toward the end of last week and proud and happy to say that they have rated our $27 million bond issue with a AAA rating. So there's many benefits to come with that, so that we're very proud of that. And then the second quick thing, so tomorrow's statewide tornado drill. What we do here at City Hall is if there are visitors at City Hall, or if any of you are at City Hall at 11:00 AM, we will take shelter and we expect visitors to do the same. It's kind of our drill and to make sure that we're doing that along with the public. So we'll be doing, participating in that, in that drill tomorrow. So just advanced awareness on that. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Interesting. The horns are going, the sirens are going to go off and everything? Thank you, sir. I think that's it. Are we done? Oh, no, we got closed session. Oh my goodness. Somebody want to read us in closed session, please? Thank you, Councilmember DeMoro, please.
Pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, and pursuant to Section 610021 of the Revised Statutes of the State of Missouri pertaining to the leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration, therefore I move for closed session.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion moved to closed session by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, just so I go on the record, I'll be recusing from the voting on the motion and from participation in the closed session due to a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Councilmember DeMoro.
Councilmember DeMoro, do you want to go in the closed session? Aye or nay?
Yes, I do. Aye.
Councilmember Pryor.
You really want to know?
Aye. Councilmember Shields is absent. Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Felker has recused. Mayor Tim Lopez?
Aye.
And Mayor Baird?
Aye. See you all later.